This meeting will come to order. This is a regular session of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, the 4th of March, 2020. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rallo?
Here.
Scambaluri?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Rosenberg?
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. All members are present. Here is a synopsis of the agenda. We will have approval of minutes from May and July of last year and January of this year. We will hear reports from councilmembers, then from the mayor and city offices. In particular, we're expecting a report from the Commission on Aging and a report from the Transportation Demand Management Consultant. We'll have reports from council committees and then from the public. Then we'll move to appointments to board the commissions. We'll have legislation for second reading and resolutions. The only item in that section is Ordinance 2004 to amend the City of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning property from business park and residential single-family to join an existing plan unit development and to approve the associated district ordinance and preliminary plan regarding 1550 North Arlington Park Drive, Trinitas petitioner. We will then go to legislation for first reading, additional public comment, questions about the council's schedule, and then we will adjourn. Let's start now with approval of minutes.
I move approval of minutes of May 1st, 2019, regular session.
Need a second? We have motion of second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. The minutes are approved.
I move approval of the minutes of July 2019, July 20, 31st, 2019, regular session.
Need a motion in a second?
One question.
Mr. Lucas?
Because these are minutes from 2019, the council, I believe in its memo, has a draft motion to suspend the rules to allow the council to take up these minutes in its ordinary course of business.
I apologize. I've taken that motion to approve the minutes of May 1st or was inappropriately made, so we need to redo it and to entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Correct. So moved.
Well, we need to, someone needs to make the motion specifically.
I move that we suspend the rules.
You need to be more specific in the motion. It's suggested text is in your packet, on the front page. Will someone please make the motion?
I move that the council suspend the rules and consider the minutes from 2019 as they are placed on council agendas for regular or special sessions in the coming months.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. This is debatable and amendable. Mr. Lucas, can you explain briefly why we needed this motion?
Due to the change of term on the council, there is a rule in Roberts that says the council should take up minutes from the past term by committee. And rather than have the council create a committee to consider these minutes, the motion would allow the council to simply take them up in its ordinary course of business as it would any other set of minutes. They're provided to all members of the council. The video of the meetings from those dates are available. Simply allows the council to approve the minutes as it would any other date.
All right. Is there any discussion on this motion? This is not just for the minutes of May 1st and July 31st, but for any minutes that the Clerk may bring forward that happened to be for a meeting that was before January 1st of this year?
Just 2019.
Again, I'm just saying, also, this is only for 2019 minutes. If not, I'll entertain a motion. Or I second, just go all in. Can I have a voice vote here?
It takes a 2019.
Okay, then we need a roll call vote on the motion. Madam Clerk?
Second.
Questions and calls in seconded. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the motion?
Yes. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's approved. All right, so we will not need to send minutes from the prior year to committee. With that, now we need to re-entertain. Do we need to re-entertain the minutes for May 1st? All right. I need to start over here. Who will, Mr. Rallo, if you would?
Yes, I move approval of the May 1st, 2019, regular session minutes.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Those minutes are approved.
I move approval of July 31st, 2019, regular session minutes.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
I move approval of January 5th, 2020, regular session minutes.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. They are approved.
I move approval of the January 29th, 2020, special session minutes.
We have motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Those are all approved. Thank you all. We now go to reports from councilmembers. I will start on my left with Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Or?
Councilmember Flaherty.
Yeah, a brief report. I wanted to let people in the audience and anybody viewing at home know about an event tomorrow night at Dimension Mill titled Meeting at the Mill, a conversation about a sustainability investment fund. The Mill is located at 642 North Madison Street, for those who don't know. And the purpose of this meeting is to gather public input and hear comments from the public in a sort of topic forum about the idea of a sustainability investment fund. So in particular, there will be some brief presentations from city staff and council for context, and then seven subject matter themed breakout tables to brainstorm and discuss and gather input around certain aspects of sustainability and how we can invest in those aspects of sustainability for the future of Bloomington. So there's that event. I also wanted to highlight that most likely, the Climate Action and Resilience Committee, which is helping to host this meeting tomorrow night, will most likely also be hosting a committee meeting next Wednesday, a week from today, in council chambers to gather additional public input in a different format. That has yet to be finalized, so just keep an eye out for it. But the meeting tomorrow night, 7 o'clock PM at the Mill. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I just want to add, the meeting tomorrow will have free food. So come and give your input and have some free snacks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Councilmember Rallo?
No.
Thanks. Councilmember Scambaluri?
Yes, just an invitation to a constituent meeting for my district coming up this Saturday. First Saturdays are when we meet, 1:30 PM in McCloskey Conference Room here at City Hall. A lot of the issues we're discussing will be focused on things going on in District 2, but anyone is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenberg?
No report.
Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. Thank you. I will be brief. I would like to make a comment, and I want to thank everyone and express my appreciation for, and as many of you know, February is considered Black History Month. Sometimes I still wonder why we get one month to be able to do some things. However, be that as it may, I do want to thank Ms. Shatoya Moss, who is our Safe and Civil City Director, Ms. Beverly Calenda Anderson, who is the department head for Community and Family Resource Department, Mr. Donald and Ms. Nicole Griffin, who is a sponsor of our Living Legend Awards, the Commission on the Status of Black Males and their multiple leadership awards. We had a very interesting essay contest that, and there was involvement with Monroe County Community School Corporation. And I will even say that this month in particular, we had excellent coverage from our local newspaper, the HT, and amongst some other media outlets, but in particular, the HT. And what I would like to say is, I hope that after February, April, May, June, July, we still have similar coverage of accomplishments of people of color, women, other minority folks, and everybody in general. So I don't want us to say, let's do this in February and then kind of forget about it in June. Thank you.
Thank you. And the only comment I'll make, as somebody who has been noted as quite the supporter of committees, I would urge everyone, please, not to get used to the idea of free food at committee meetings. This is a special event that was also meant to highlight the new Mill building that has become an incubator for local businesses, but yeah, we can't always do the free food. All right. With that, we now go to reports from the mayor and city offices. We're going to start with the Commission on Aging. Phil Stafford is here to present. He'll have 10 minutes, and we'll have five minutes for questions. Because we only have one major item on the agenda tonight, we will relax the rules since there are two reports to be made. So I think 15 minutes will be enough for this report to start with. Mr. Stafford, if you would.
Thank you, Councilor Volin. The City of Bloomington Commission on Aging is, our statutory responsibilities include the following. We develop study committees addressing concerns of seniors in health and wellness, housing, transportation, employment, social services, and recreation. We encourage the development of programs of particular benefit to senior citizens. We apply for grants as may contribute to the strengthening and refining of a coordinated program to benefit senior citizens. We serve as a catalyst to promote positive public and private remedies to the multifaceted challenges confronting seniors in our community and the resulting effects on the entire community. We network with like-minded groups, and we celebrate the many, many contributions seniors make to the Bloomington community. Those are our statutory responsibilities. And the commission is a dedicated group of individuals with considerable professional and personal experience in the field of aging, and in our community and beyond. While we have functioned with less than whole membership this past year, we think that's being addressed. And our members in the previous year included Jennifer Burns, Lori Clendenning, Jenny Donigan. I'd like to acknowledge Jack Khan, who's in the front row there for his many years of service to the Commission on Aging, I think maybe from the very beginning. And I'd like to acknowledge Ron Smith, who was a very effective and excellent commissioner prior to his ascendancy to the city council, Yanda Snyder, and Phil Stafford. What I'd like to do briefly is talk about what we accomplished in 2019, what we hope to do in 2020. In last February, we prepared a challenge grant, ARP Community Challenge Grant, for the development of a pop-up park, pop-up play street. Eventually, the grant was not submitted, but it involved a fair amount of work. In March, we conducted a literature search and review of national innovative practices that might be relevant to Bloomington, the Bloomington scene. And that resulted in, through April through October, strategy meetings and program prioritizing. We also established digital procedures for agenda sharing and minutes for our meetings, so we could do real-time minute-taking in front of everybody's eyes. We provided active testimony at public hearings of the Unified Development Ordinance, as you may know, on such issues as accessory dwelling apartments, accessory dwelling units, universal design, the duplex-triplex controversy, and other issues. We've been very invested, both in the comprehensive plan in the previous year and in the development of the UDO in this past year. In May, we participated in Senior Expo, and we sponsored and participated actively in the annual dementia-friendly community conference. We're coming up on the third conference in May, so I hope you'll pay attention to this group. It's a very active group, working in the community to improve quality of life for people with dementia and their family caregivers and the community as a whole. In June, we voiced support for the Andrite East programming and have been thrilled with the use, the utilization of the site and the mall for senior programming. Particularly happy with the Community Arts Gallery, that's now a next-door neighbor to Andrite East. We think that's a wonderful pairing. We provided two educational events at Andrite East in the past summer. And in August, we participated in the WTIU Conference on Aging, participation and that included a luncheon keynote that we provided. In September, we were networking in the community to identify potential intergenerational events that we could support. We also appointed our new liaison to the Active Aging Network, which is a local group of people who are actively involved in supporting and addressing aging issues in the community, and that's Lori Clendenning. In the coming year, we hope to continue efforts to promote intergenerational arts events. We're particularly interested in somebody taking on the challenge of developing an intergenerational choir, not a multi-generational choir, but an intergenerational choir. We're preparing now to convene area service providers for networking and collaboration in a roundtable in the next month or two. We'd like to propose wider involvement of the service community in the WTIU Conference on Aging. We will actively advocate for the lifetime community framework that guides our thinking about all these issues, and dementia-friendly framing for the hospital site redevelopment planning efforts. We hope to be actively involved in the planning for the old hospital site. We will continue to study and research best practices in health, social, and community services, including new models of aging and place care for older adults with chronic illnesses and disabilities, through the leadership of Yanda Snyder, who is one of our commissioners and the former head of the Division of Aging in Indiana. So that's a quick overview of our work this past year and our goals for the coming year. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford.
It's a low-tech report, no PowerPoints.
That's allowed here. Thank you for your report and for your service. Let's start with my right, with Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. Not only it's allowed, it's sometime preferred, but thank you very much for the report. I just have one question, just so that I'm clear. Can you explain to the difference between intergenerational and multi-generational?
Well, a multi-generational musical event would have kids doing a program and then older adults doing a program. An intergenerational choir involves the development of relationships among younger people and older people, and in preparation for a single performance that addresses both groups at the same time. So it's a deeper, more deliberate attempt to bridge intergenerational gaps.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I have the same.
Yeah, I had the same question, too, so we all know that. Councilmember Scambaluri?
Thank you for that report. Could you speak a little bit more about the dementia-friendly programming that's going on? I know the Monroe County History Center has done some great work, and that's an important resource for our community. Could you talk a little bit about it?
Yeah, it's a wonderful initiative. Three years ago, the first conference attracted 100 people at Sherwood Oaks Church, and I'm sure it'll be just as successful this year. This year, and we've, it involves people with dementia doing presentations also, which is very, 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 very helpful and compelling. This year, we're going to be, I'm sorry, I don't know the date. It's either the 17th or the 18th. I don't know if we've landed on a date in May. Same location. And this year will be a significant participation event. We'll be setting up participatory activities relative to social domains and commercial and economic domains, and I can't remember the other one. But there'll be exhibits with a lot of participation, a lot of arts-related activities, opportunities for people to be fully engaged in the idea of a dementia-friendly community. And we hope to extend the work relative to the old hospital redevelopment to make sure that that new neighborhood is dementia-friendly, so that it's not only a question of people living in that neighborhood knowing how to be around people with dementia, how to learn from people with dementia, how people with dementia can be oriented and with appropriate signage and wayfinding kinds of supports in the community. Prospect of new services and supports. For example, if we have a community center that develops as a part of the redevelopment initiative, it will be very important to make sure we serve people with dementia there as well. So those are just a few of the examples, I guess.
Great, thank you.
I should have mentioned the History Center dementia-friendly programming, which is very close to my heart as well. So a number of businesses and organizations in the community are becoming dementia-friendly through a certification program that's developed by the Alzheimer's Resource Service of IU Health.
My follow-up question. Can you give us an example of what dementia-friendly means by talking about, say, street signage? Like what, I mean, is it simply the existence of clear street signage, or does it, is it designed in a certain way?
Could you repeat that a little louder?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll get, is this working? Okay. So I wanted you to give us an illustration of what dementia-friendly means by talking about the example of street signage. Like, how does a dementia-friendly street signage differ from normal street signage?
Well, some of it is relative to normal changes in vision that people experience sometimes as they age, but things like contrast and font size and, you know, those kinds of things. Sometimes the inclusion of a pictogram, pictograph, along with text is useful for people.
In other words, like when you see in a parking garage that they have, like at Grand Canyon Level or the Yosemite Level, so you can remember what floor you're on?
Yeah, you know, or if it's a little café, there's, you know, the sign also has knife and fork, you know, simple kind of things. Too much signage can be kind of confusing, but signage that's appropriately placed and intelligible and engaging for people. Sometimes color coding is another strategy. If we're developing senior housing, we might consider the use of color in the senior housing to provide an orientation cues for people with dementia that might be living there, things like that.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Smith?
Thanks for the presentation very much, Mr. Stafford. It's a lot of important, good work. One of my questions is, would be, if we talk about universal design, what do we as council members need to know about that? And what do builders or developers that come before us, what do they need to be considering to affect that? Yes, well, we are thrilled that there's some universal design language now in the UDO relative to projects of a certain size, whether it's congregate housing or individual housing in new developments. So we're really, really thrilled, and that universal design is defined in the ordinance now also. And in the coming year, what I would encourage the city council to think about when proposals are coming forward, I know there's a big Trinitas proposal coming forward, there's the Crescent development, I can't say I'm in the know on this, but we advocated when that development came forward that every single, every first-floor unit should be accessible, visitable, no-step entrance on every ground-floor unit. And that should be the case in Trinitas, in other developments that are forthcoming. And a no-step entrance is kind of a hallmark of this concept of visitability that we talk about, which is kind of a form of universal design that works well for everybody. That's why it's called universal design. For us all that are getting older, right? Well, yeah. Is there anybody in here who's not aging? Okay, all right.
Point well made. Thank you, Mr. Stafford, for the presentation with the Commission on Aging.
Thank you.
We have one more presentation. This is the presentation from the, of the Draft Transportation Demand Management Implementation Plan. That's a mouthful. Beth Rosenberg here to frame it for us, or are you presenting?
I'm just introducing. So Beth Rosenberg with Planning and Transportation Staff. I just want to say I'm happy to introduce Justin Shore. He's our lead consultant from Wells and Associates. And Mr. Shore has led the development of a transportation demand management plan, along with his team and local stakeholders. Tonight, his presentation is an overview of key recommendations in that, and the report is forthcoming. So I'll give it to Justin. Thanks.
Then we'll have plenty of time for questions afterwards. Thank you, please go ahead.
Great. Mr. President, members of the council, thanks for having me here today. As Beth alluded to, this planning document that we have is rather lengthy. This is an overview. I'm going to go through it very quickly, and to your point, Mr. President, leave as much time as possible for Q and A. So just to orient you about how this presentation will flow, we're basically going to talk about how we came up with the recommendations, the research that we did, talk a little bit about the recommendations themselves, and then wrap it up with, if we were to implement those recommendations, what would be required. So I'll start with the first key element of our work. It started with market research, and a piece of that market research was something that we call a SOAR, a Strengths, Opportunities, Aspirations, and Results Analysis. And it's intended to do two things, to be actively engaging the stakeholders as well as help with goal-setting. And as you can see here, we had a great cross-section of both public and private sector perspectives from throughout the entire region. So we got, you know, really good input from a number of different perspectives. Kind of going to the last letter in that SOAR, the key takeaway from the results is that the City of Bloomington will know that it has achieved its transportation aspirations if it does these three things. First is to, that transportation has a positive impact on visitor and employee decisions to both shop and work in downtown Bloomington. The second is that transportation options will connect not only to and within, but around downtown, and as perceived as both convenient and safe. And then lastly, this is something that's already in the sustainability plan, but is reinforced through this TDM plan, is to reduce single occupancy vehicles, or SOVs, as the acronym is, from 62.8% to 60% by 2022, which is now getting closer and closer. The next piece of the market research was a peer review. So we had established what sort of the metrics for success were. Now we looked at, what do other communities that are similar do with regard to TDM and having comparable goals? And as you can imagine, no two communities are exactly alike, but we did find a number of college-town communities from across the nation that share across them a combination of qualities that are similar to those of Bloomington. And amongst the ones that we did identify, the closest peers, you know, sort of ranked in order, were Ann Arbor, Michigan, Portland, Maine, and Fort Collins, Colorado. And it had to do, again, with unique attributes that are explained in more detail in the But when we look at what those, most peer communities, those top three I mentioned, have, and then we look at what we don't have in Bloomington, this is the list of the things that we, this would be the gap, the things that we don't have. Carpool and vanpool matching, a means to help facilitate people finding other people to ride with. Parking rides, where you could meet a bus or meet other carpoolers and then ride in the rest of the way. Outreach to local employers, because those are the trips that are typically causing the most congestion and the most strain on parking. Educating their employees about what their choices are. Providing, you know, incentives to people, for people to try transit. And then finally, car share. That's the generic term. You may know Zipcar as a model that is, or a particular brand. You'll notice on the slide here that there are a couple of asterisks throughout, and those asterisks basically indicate that these things are actually available at IU, but they're just not extended to the city at large and are not really convenient to downtown. So they could be expanded and provided in a more broader fashion, more broad fashion. The last element of our market research was in a more broader fashion, more broad fashion. The last element of our market research was surveys, and we did two key audiences. One was downtown residential parking permit applicants, and the other was downtown employees. So I'm going to start with the residential parking permit survey that we did. This was administered from August 5th until September 13th, and it was done as a paper survey that was included with the parking permit applications. It was focused on people who obviously applied for residential parking, but in more specific than the general downtown area. And as you can see, we had a nice response rate out of the total of 1,600, roughly 1,600 applicants during that window of time, and as you know, you can apply outside that window as well. We got 523 responses, thanks in large part to the staff on the parking team led by Michelle Wall. That led to a 31% response rate, which gives us a margin of error of four. So we feel really good about the quality of the data we have and the accuracy of it as we go through the next several slides. Just kind of at a glance, you know, where do the people who took this survey come from? Where were their, what zone parking permit were they in? And as you can see, we got people from just about every zone. There's nine zones here that we got a sample from. The largest concentrations happened to be in Zones 1, 4, and 5, but we did get representation from across all of them. So how were all these people who took the survey traveling to work or school? And we did ask them, you know, to acknowledge either one, work or school. And what you'll see here is 37% of the respondents are driving alone at least one day a week. That's pretty low by most standards, most big city standards even, to have only, you know, less than 40% of your people driving. Then the highest mode of transportation that people use to get to work or school is walking, and that's, as you can see, over 42%. So, you know, what's interesting here, aside from what I just pointed out, is that when you reverse it out, 63% of people are driving, I'm sorry, are not driving, but they are owning a car or bringing a car here and getting a permit for it. So you have a disproportionate number of people that have a car. They're not really using it for their day-to-day commuting. The question we had is what else are you using, using it for? And that's, we did some more in-depth research on that with some subsequent surveys. And clearly, as you can imagine, it's doing errands and fun activities on the weekend is primarily what they're using their cars for. 70% of the respondents on this residential parking permit survey live between a half-mile and two-and-a-half miles from their workplace or school. And as you can see with the big red circles on here, the highest concentrations, 85% of the people are on the IU campus. So most of the people that took this survey are commuting on the campus either as students or as staff. When we asked them, this is a probing question we like to use to gauge whether they're on, you know, how committed are they to their car? Are they handcuffed to their steering wheel or not? And we asked them, if driving was suddenly not a choice for you, what would you do? And as you can see here, 55% of the respondents would bike to work if they suddenly couldn't drive. And again, that's not a big surprise based on the distance that they are from their workplace or school, but nonetheless, it's a significant number. In many other regions, when we ask that question, you would expect it to be more on the bus side. So biking being big is noteworthy. When we asked them more nuanced questions about, would you be open to other forms of transportation, 69% said that they would consider carpooling. So again, there's an openness to trying things other than driving for people who are driving on a regular basis. Moving on to the employees, so we were just talking about the residents. This group of employees were surveyed from October 21st to the 31st, and this was more of an online format. We did it through their employers. And what I want to point out here is that this was downtown employees that do not work at IU, so it's everything around IU. On this one, that sap, that larger population comprised about 13,000 employees, we got 1,100 approximate responses for a response rate of 9%, but a margin of error of just under three. So again, we feel very confident about the information and that it pretty accurately extrapolates out to the larger population as a whole. Oops, I think I just turned that off. There we go. So how do those people, those employees commute to work? And this is much different than what you saw earlier with the residential parking permit survey. 78%, and this is more in line with the national averages that you see, 78% of people are driving alone at least one day a week. And then for those who drive, it's not a surprise, you know, we, we asked them where they live, and we could see that their proximity to work and whether or not they had employer-subsidized spaces were the two main reasons for where people park and how they commute to work. As you can see, the second highest utilized form of transportation is biking, but it's a very, very distant second place to driving alone. I alluded to the geographic nature of our analysis, and what we found was that employees live greater, you know, for the most part, two-and-a-half miles or more outside of downtown, the majority of them. And 15% of downtown employees are outside of 10 miles, that outer light gray area outside the dark green ring. And they're also living in largely lower-density single-family homes in areas that are not only stressful if you're a biker, but have, you know, they don't have a convenient way to walk to transit. It's probably more than a 10-minute walk, which is the general threshold for how far people will walk to take transit. And this is looking more specifically at that trend, at our BT Transit Network. The majority of the employees live outside, I'm sorry, live in areas where the bus only comes once an hour. So you can see that the red polygons around the yellow lines are areas that have a five-minute walk to work, but the bus frequency is very low. So even when they are near buses, they're not really near routes that are particularly convenient to get to downtown. When we asked these folks, if driving was suddenly not an option for you, what would you do? Carpool, biking, and busing came in at the top three, but you can see the one that stands out the most is carpool. And again, this is not a surprise when your choices for biking and for taking transit are limited. Carpooling ends up being the thing that fills in the gaps. You can always find somebody that lives near you or on your way to work that you can ride with. But 28% of the respondents said they would carpool if they suddenly couldn't drive. So that kind of sums up our market research that we did. Then we looked at, okay, if, if we're going to look at the best practices that are out there amongst peer communities and with TDM in general, how do we fare within Bloomington in terms of a gap analysis? And by that, I mean, we have this aspiration we want to achieve, we are where we are, what do we need to do to close that gap? You can see here, there's four main categories under this broader category called general TDM strategies. And general TDM strategies are things that apply across the board, across all modes of transportation. That is technology, financial incentives, travel time incentives, and then marketing and education. In the next slide, I'm going to talk more specifically about individual modes, but all of these, you can see, we went through, and in the report, we really fleshed each of these strategies out. We identified, hey, these are some things that we have in Bloomington, they just need to be enhanced a little bit. Here are some things that we don't have that are really necessary if we're going to close the gap to, to achieve our best practices. So I alluded to these more targeted strategies, and they definitely complement the general ones that I alluded to on the previous slide, but they're organized around five primary categories of choices that affect transportation demand. So the first one is mode. And again, we use mode as a way to define modes of transportation, biking, busing, et cetera. And these are different strategies that can be used to enhance the modes other than driving that people would use to get to work or to school. Departure time, times of day, if you can avoid when there's peak parking concerns or peak traffic, you've helped with those concerns as well. Routing strategies, trip reduction strategies, location and design are the five main categories. And again, you can see, we went through, we identified whether this was something that we have here and we just need to enhance, or whether there's an additional strategy that's needed. All of that is outlined in more detail in the plan itself. Collectively, though, all of those little Xs and all those boxes came to about two dozen different strategies that we would want to do. And the question is, okay, where do we start? What's the most important strategies that we want to prioritize out of those roughly two dozen? We spent some time with the stakeholders talking about their philosophy for TDM, and this is important because there are strategies in there that some might consider sticks, and there are strategies in there that some might consider carrots. And so the general consensus amongst the stakeholders was that we should focus on carrots first, and really allow, you know, allow that to take hold before we start implementing any sticks. The analogy I would, you know, give is that if you're beating somebody over the head with a stick and they don't have anything positive to go to, it's just going to be painful. What we want to do is really just nudge them with the stick over to something that's a more desired behavior. This last bullet, though, wasn't something that came from the stakeholders. This is something we have seen as a firm that's worked in a lot of different communities. The carrots take a while for people to identify with. They take probably two to three years before people understand what they are. And then, once you implement the sticks, it still takes people a little while to nudge their way over to the carrots. So my only advice is to be very patient. Am I out of time? Okay. So a couple key things here. Again, if we're going to narrow down on our strategies, the other thing was to focus on our short-term priorities, which is, as we said earlier, 2022, we want to be moving from 62.8% to 60%. And this is roughly 1,000 commuters out of the 24,000 total that are in Bloomington. These are the strategies that we would focus on. The top one, TDM, marketing and education, is only going to get you halfway to your goal. Carpool matching and guaranteed ride home are really important, but ultimately, if we're going to achieve, close that gap that's up there, some parking pricing is going to be necessary. And that's the stick I was alluding to earlier. Those are the priority strategies. The question is how to organize them in order to deliver them. And as you can see here, the best practices from the peer review that we did would indicate most of the other communities are having it in a city department. They vary which department, but it's in the city when you're looking at the peers. We talked with stakeholders. They said, you know what, we think we should follow a model similar to that, and it should be housed in the city as a, some sort of a division within the larger organization. The role that it would play, the key here, again, I know I'm running short on time, the top bullet there actively coordinates and cross-pollinates throughout the community, which means within the city, across departments, across the region with external departments, outside of the city with employers. Its job is to cross-pollinate across all types of organizations. You can imagine you can't do all that work without having some staff. Based on our experience, implementing these kinds of programs elsewhere, you're going to require about two-and-a-half full-time equivalents. And so you need a high-level person that can interact with all the high-level agencies and external partners. You need somebody to run the day-to-day, and you need somebody to support them in a part-time capacity. The cost to run that type of program is about a half million dollars a year. Half of that is staff, half of that is operating expenses or programmatic expenses. And again, all the details of this are in the plan, but for the sake of time, we're just going to kind of skim through it. The last thing here that we have is how do you pay for that half-million-dollar program? In many other regions, they are able to apply for federal funds under something called congestion mitigation air quality, or CMAC. The air quality is the key part of that. Thankfully, Bloomington does not have an air quality problem, at least according to the Fed standards. And so that, that typical funding source is not available. So the primary opportunity outside of city revenue streams would be to go to the Surface Transportation Block Grant reimbursement program through the federal government. And I, the key word there is reimbursement. Obviously, the city still needs to front those costs, but it could get reimbursed up to 80% of that. But the other sources of funding that would come locally, the operating budget, taxes, you can also look for campaign sponsorships. Those would be things you could do short-term. Longer term, there's an opportunity to either increase fees or take portions of the fees to pay for the program. And just last, we've outlined in the plan, you know, basically two-year effort from whenever you say go. It would take about two years to get everything we just described off the ground. Obviously, you need to find the funding, you need to hire the staff to get the programs going, the programs need to get traction, and then ultimately, you want to monitor that to see how the programs are going. But it, generally, in our experience, it's going to take you 18 to 24 months from go to execution. So thank you for the extra time. Sorry, that ran a little long.
You're welcome. It's a topic of interest to everyone, and I would ask at the outset, can we please have the slides that you just presented sent to us? Do you already have them? Do we, do we have them already? Okay, wonderful. With that, I'll open it up to questions. Let's try to limit our questions to 15 minutes. Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. First thing, these slides that we're going to get, they are part of the overall report that we will be getting. Are they inclusive, or is this a separate presentation?
This is separate. This is a summary. The, the, the plan is probably 94 pages. It includes all the graphics you saw.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. One question I do have, and I don't know if we can go back, but you had an example of city staff or department 2.5 FTEs.
Yes.
But the cost, and it seems to me that the cost reduced, you said it'd be about a half million dollars, it's four something.
Right.
But those costs reduce from year one to year three. And what do you attribute that to? Generally, it tends to rise more with salary increases and some other things. So I found that interesting, that it is actually reducing, not by much, but that, that's kind of a reversal trend.
It's a great question. To your point, the staff costs do go up. So the first, the staff and overhead, as you can see, I mean, the overhead goes down because things like laptops and other supplies that you purchase once upfront are, you know, you don't need to purchase in the subsequent years. And that, that's probably the biggest delta on the overhead. The staff costs continue to go up. There are some other things that you can see on the direct expenses that you may buy once, and then they go down over time. Our thought here, as you go down into the direct expenses, you'll see marketing and TDM contractors. In the beginning, part of the reason we say two-and-a-half is we want to give you the flexibility to see how much staff resources you really need. And by hiring some part-time consultants, you can gauge that until you stabilize. And so we see that going down over time as well. Once you've understood, like, oh, we're either going to hire more staff or not, that tends to go down.
Okay, thank you.
It's a great question.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Looking forward to digging into the report. I watched your presentation from June 12th, 2019, just recently to prepare for this meeting, and you said something in that presentation that struck me a little bit, which is that the strategies and what you prioritize and how you pursue them might differ depending on what your goals are. So you highlighted, you know, greenhouse gas emissions reductions versus reducing congestion versus, you know, other goals. Does that factor into the plan? I don't think you got into it too much in this presentation, but how does that manifest in the, in the report that we will be getting?
That's a great question. So as you mentioned, there are a number of different ways that you can define success. For this one, it was primarily focused on parking demand in downtown. And so a lot of the recommendations are about how we can encourage, for example, residents in downtown to not own a car. If they're only driving on the weekends, what can, what kind of trips are they making that we could deliver in other ways so they don't feel they have to own a car that's sitting there three quarters of the week, if not more? So parking was the primary driver. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I'm wondering what the strategy is for presenting this plan to the public? Because this is a pretty new concept to most people. They don't know what TDM is and why we would want to do it and all this. So could you speak to that a little bit, or maybe Ms. Rosenbarger could?
And by that, just a clarifying question, once the program is launched, how do you communicate it to the public, or prior to it launching?
Well, depending on the, the funding, maybe prior to it launching. If we're going to use public money, we probably should inform people ahead of time.
That's a great question.
That's going to be part of our budget.
Right. I can speak to, you know, that may be better for Scott to answer, but I could speak to post-funding for sure. So, so the draft plan will be available.
Can you say your name, please?
Thank you, Councilmember Volan. Scott Robinson, Assistant Director for Planning and Transportation.
Thank you.
This process was public in the sense of the surveys and the stakeholders that were involved in the SOAR that helped define the scope of programming. A lot of the programs really rely on employers to encourage their employees to participate in those programs. And so a lot of that And so a lot of that coordination was working with them. As far as the plans, recommendations, that will be available online very soon that people can look at and review. And obviously, if there's financial expenditures that the city would be considering, that's something that we would engage. But this is just the first step of the process, to evaluate those programs and get feedback from the community. So again, with that initial team that Justin outlined in the beginning on those stakeholders and employers, a lot of that was vetted internally with, with their employees. And a lot of these programs kind of rely on those employers to encourage the carrots, as Justin talked about, for them to participate in, you know, the rideshare program or car sharing. And that's a lot what currently Indiana University does with their TDM plan on campus. That's all internally within their employees and staff, and it's not something externally. So that's kind of the nuance. What we're dealing with here is there are some public aspects, but there are some parts to the recommendations that really are dependent upon a TDM manager to going to employers to say, hey, we want to encourage you to participate in these programs that we're trying to get the community in. And that's the part about the cross-pollinating and whatnot. So moving forward, there would be a bunch more public-facing aspects to implement the strategies that are identified. Does that answer your question?
I guess I'm, I know that employers will be vital to this effort, but I'm wondering, you know, since at least 20% of this budget will come from internal funds, whether there's, you know, are there plans to reach out to everybody in the city and explain what this is, why we're doing it? And really, there's no reason to limit this to downtown. If an employer on the east side wants to implement some, then we should support that as well. So I guess, I don't know at what stage that would be most appropriate, but I'm, I'm hoping that there will be a broader engagement of the public.
Yeah, I think there's opportunities to do that. One of the challenges with scoping this project out was defining the study area. And again, the downtown was identified as that, and there's certainly employers outside of the downtown, and there's opportunities to look at, you know, on the west side, with employers on the west side in Ivy Tech and Monroe County. So I think what was envisioned is these are examples that we hope to grow and move forward with it, other employers and locations outside of the city could emulate and, and kind of build upon that success. So this is really a strategy, kind of getting the whole program getting kicked off, again, within that kind of one- to two-year, two-and-a-half-year timeline that was outlined with that. And certainly opportunity to have those discussions and feedback with that process.
Okay. Mr. Shore, did you want to add anything from your experience?
Thank you, yes. Just to follow up to Scott's point, we talked about, sorry, I'm trying to think of where it was. This slide, just to piggyback on what Scott was saying. We did highlight in the plan that we were going to start with downtown. That is the, the area that was defined for the study, but it was also an area where we had a critical mass. And we would, you know, work on succeeding in a confined area and then expand out. So it was intended to be a model that could be replicated within the city and beyond. And that's what all of, you know, I kind of rushed through this, but when we talk about coordinating with other local entities, it was other local government jurisdictions. So it was intended to be replicated elsewhere.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Any other questions? Councilmembers Campbell, Lurie.
Thank you for your presentation. Can you go back to the slide on budget, please?
Sure.
Couple of questions here. For those of us who aren't as familiar with it, could you talk about ride-matching software and guaranteed ride home and just define a few of those for us?
Sure, absolutely. And as, just to point out, those were two key elements back here. And it's, you know, and the, so just to describe what they are, that's a great question. Guaranteed ride home is essentially insurance for your commute, is the best way to describe it. So the, the number-one reason, we do surveys all the time, and if not number-one, maybe number-two reason why people are uncomfortable leaving their car at home and doing something else is they have a concern that they may have an emergency in the middle of the day. Their kid gets sick, they need to pick them up from daycare or school. They get sick and they need to go home, and now they just left their carpool partner stranded at work. Whatever it is, some regions call it an emergency ride home, because that is a little more in alignment with what I just described. But that is essentially guaranteed ride home. The way you often administer it is through either a taxi or ride-hailing system to get people, you know, for free. And you're basically paying for their trip from their work to their home or destination with the understanding that you committed to use some other form of transportation prior to signing up for that. So it's sort of a quid pro quo. The ride-matching software is essentially a carpool matching software. A lot of people live right down the street from people that they either work with or work near in downtown or elsewhere, and they just don't know who those people are. By creating a larger regional database where people can put their names in and find out who's near them, you begin to identify other people that you could carpool. That can take the form of sort of like a, I say static, but more of a website, or it can be, there's apps nowadays that do that as well. For example, Waze Carpool does that sort of dynamically, you know, where it helps match you to other people that you could carpool with to work.
Thank you. And may I ask one more question? You talked about an 80/20 split in budget. So for a city of Bloomington, I assume this scales, so that's about 100,000 a year. When you have worked with other cities and municipalities, where have you seen them get that money? Is it private support? Is it typically new money? Is it cannibalized from somewhere else? What have you seen?
Yeah, most typically, it's coming from parking. They work very synergistically together, you know. So I talked about parking pricing earlier as the stick, but it is the most effective strategy to change people's travel behavior. If they have to pay a price that really makes them pause and say, hmm, did I really want to do that? Or maybe I'll take transit or carpool. So very often, what we find is that the parking and TDM are actually on the same team, working to find the right balance of what's the right price to move people to something else without causing some negative economic impact where people no longer want to go to that destination. So that was a long answer. The short answer is typically it comes from parking revenue, either.
And parking can cover, have you seen it cover that entire 20%? For example? Have you seen any cities look at other solutions?
You know, I don't, I don't know exactly what portion of their budgets the TDM is, but that's more often than not where the money is coming from. I could find that out for sure, though.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I've got a question, if no? No? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thank you, that, thank you for this presentation. I just want to clarify, so your role is not to say, look, we need better infrastructure for bike and ped, but your role is to say, here's what we could, we can do with what we have or lack thereof, I guess, to, to change behavior. So like talking about carrots and sticks, that's, that's what you do and not talk about, like you don't have enough bike lanes.
That's a great question. So it's probably worth defining what transportation demand management is. In the world of transportation, you can address your parking or traffic concerns through supply-side solutions. That would be building more lanes of traffic, bike lanes, you know, even bus service, although it's an operations thing, is more of a supply of a type of service. The demand management is, is managing how people use all of the different infrastructure. So just as an extreme case, we did the Vancouver Winter Olympic TDM plan, and they had a concern that they have super-high transit ridership, and you have all of these visitors, athletes, media coming in, and they didn't think that their transit system could handle the capacity of all that additional people. So their TDM plan was focused on getting local residents off the transit network and allowing the capacity to be used another way. So I use that as an extreme to say, demand management is whatever the resource is that is constrained, you're trying to change behavior. And at the end of the day, TDM is about changing travel behavior from one undesired way of traveling to another, more desired way. It's a great question.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. It's great.
Sure.
And, and I, I used to use the CERTA program. Are you familiar with that from Indianapolis?
Indianapolis, yep.
To go back and forth in a van. And the, and the, it was, the software was great. It worked really well. The one thing that I was, maybe you can speak to this, the one thing that was challenging in the beginning was people learning of how to enroll into the software and then taking advantage of the benefits. Do you have any, any thoughts or any wisdom from your analysis about that?
If wisdom means I've made a lot of mistakes, then yes. No, I've got some, I've got some good nuggets. What we typically do is, for example, this survey that we just did, instead of just asking how you got to work, you can ask a question at the end that say, and would you like information about, you know, being matched to other choices? And so then you, very quickly, in this case, we had 1,100 people, if they all checked that box, you'd now have 1,100 people in the database without having to ask them to sign up for carpool.
Is that through a phone app? How did they, how did they find that?
The survey? We, I mean, we, we did a, an online instrument. They could have done it on their phone, on their computer, whatever. We sent a link to an online survey instrument.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah. It's a great point.
All right. I'll hone my question to one, since we've run out of time here. That, what you just said about Vancouver is a concern that we have about our pending desire to build a convention center, to expand a convention center. And, you know, like how, that we're concerned about convention center parking competing with commuter parking. You know, do you, do you talk about, do you plan convention center TDM or other special event TDMs besides the Olympics? I mean, what do you say to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think if I'm understanding what you're saying, you know, ideally, you'd like to free up some of the commuter parking so that conventioneers could use that.
Or that we're planning to build a convention center garage, but a garage right next door that's meant to be for commuters and shoppers downtown might get co-opted by the other garage if they're not priced the same.
So I think your last point there is the key, is making sure the pricing is consistent. You know, really, because people will go to the, you know, water flows downstream, so they'll just go to the path of least resistance.
What you're basically saying is there's a plan, that, that's part of the plan, we can take that into account if we have professional staff doing this.
Right. It's not specified in this plan, but that would be the kind of thing that the staff could manage. We, you know, we looked more broadly at the package of strategies that you need to do. That would be a more nuanced incident, or not incident, but event that you'd want to apply it toward.
And is Surface Transportation Block Grant funding hard to get? Or do we automatically qualify for it if we put up matching funds?
I mean, you're already, from my understanding, qualifying for it now. You're getting it. It's just how, my understanding is this last year, there's a little more funding available than there has been in past years. I can't say that that will be the case moving forward. It's fairly competitive, but the city is already receiving it. It's a question of how you allocate it.
Got it, very good. So when will the report be issued?
Well, we're putting the final edits on it right now. Staff is reviewing it. I don't want to put words in their mouth, but.
In a week, in a month? How soon can we look forward to seeing it?
In the near future. Yes, they, they just provided an updated draft. Staff needs to do a review, and then we'll be happy to provide it more than a week.
I'm looking for beach reading, that's all I'm saying.
Less than months, lower than that.
Beach reading. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the report and your work on it, and look forward to the report being released. Thanks again. With that, we now go to reports from the council committees. Are there any council committee reports that are not already on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we go to reports from the public. Is there any member of the public who is here to speak? If so, can you raise your hand? One, two? Okay, you'll each have five minutes. Please come to the podium and state your name.
I'm here, I'm Greg Alexander. I'm here again to speak about the sidewalk on the east side of Rogers Street between the Beeline and 11th Street. It runs right through pretty much the center of the Trades District at the edge of where the current construction has been. My concern is it's going to be closed basically for five years as the Trades District is built out. And we've already seen a year between 2018 and 2019 where that sidewalk was closed, and it's not entirely open today. There's a spot of gravel in the middle of it where you, there's no sidewalk, it's just gravel. And one of the advantages of it having been closed for a year is that they installed a nice 10-foot-wide sidewalk between the Beeline and 10th Street. It's, it's a real short one, but it's 10 feet wide, which is pretty wide. It's, it makes sense. It's basically part of the Beeline. And it shouldn't have taken a year to do that. It should have taken a couple of weeks, but we have it now, and I'd like to keep it, you know? And so this isn't the most egregious thing that's happened to sidewalks, but it's something that I followed from the beginning to end, is the Trades District garage approval process. And I came to city council, and we were reassured by the Deputy Mayor McRae-Nison and by, by Alex Crowley that the garage would be good for bikes and peds. I don't know if you believe that. And then I was at Plan Commission, and we were assured by Eric Gruelick, a city planning services manager, that, that, or I said the wrong word there, whatever it is, senior planning zoning manager, I don't know what it is. And he assured us that the sidewalk on Rogers Street there would be, it would be unimpacted, unimpacted during the construction of this garage. And, but the sidewalk on 10th Street would be closed. And I like that, unimpacted, no impact. So it's a 10-foot sidewalk now. That's great, we'll keep a 10-foot sidewalk. And then, over Christmas break, they put up the construction fences and they blocked eight feet of that 10-foot sidewalk. So that's, it's a pretty significant impact in my mind. You can just barely squeeze one person through there now. And then they moved it back to block only four feet of the sidewalk. And then one of the subcontractors thought, wouldn't it be great if I could park some heavy equipment on the sidewalk? They moved it back to blocking the whole sidewalk. A couple of days later, they moved it back. It's only blocking four feet of the sidewalk again. You know, I went to the public, or yeah, Board of Public Works, because Jackie Scanlon was here a couple of weeks ago, and she said that if you, if you want to close a sidewalk, you have to get permission from the Board of Public Works. And so I went, and it turns out, the sidewalk had been closed for seven weeks. The sidewalk on 10th Street had actually been bulldozers, backhoes, it was gone. It was, had been demolished. And they were going to Public Works, asking for permission to close the sidewalk that they had already demolished. Kind of stunning to me, but seven weeks later, they, they asked permission. And then at Public Works, I was, I said that the sidewalk on Rogers Street was supposed to be unimpacted, and here it is. You know, four feet of it's blocked. And I was shocked by this, but, but Sarah Gomez, I don't know her, her position, but, and Adam Wason, Public Works, were both there, and they both, they rebutted me. You know, they said, we don't have any responsibility to keep the sidewalk unimpacted, we only have to keep 54 inches open, which, you know, I, I know Adam Wason has come to you guys and said, we do what we can for sidewalks, but to the Board of Public Works, he says, forget it, we're going to cut down the sidewalk, it's going to be impacted. And so today, I went down there with a measuring tape, and it is, it's four feet of it is blocked and six feet of it's open. And as subcontractors come and go, that's going to get worse, like. And the reason I bring all this up is that process matters. You guys need to be able to rely, when staff comes and tells you the procedure, you need to be able to rely on that. When, when the deputy mayor comes here and tells you something, you need to be able to rely on that. When, when a planning staff member says that the sidewalk is going to be unimpacted, you need to rely on that. And there's a, a discussion lately about whether you guys should be micromanaging department heads. And I think we can all agree that there are certain oversight responsibilities of this board, of the Board of Public Works, of the, the Plan Commission. And those cannot be carried out if you cannot rely on staff to give accurate information. That's all I got. Thanks.
Any other public comment?
Any other public comment?
Paul, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about a, there's a board of directors meeting for Bloomington Transit on the 17th, and they're going to be voting on an efficiency study that they did last year. They released it to the public in June. Basically, where they're looking at their routes and trying to become, come up with the most efficient routes due to declining ridership and a lot of, a lot of other factors. You know, I've been an advocate for people with disabilities for 25 years, and I got to be honest with you, when I hear the word efficiency, most of the time, that means accessibility goes down. And that's true in this report. So to keep it really simple, the most efficient way to get from point A to point B is a straight So to keep it really simple, the most efficient way to get from point A to point B is a straight line. And so BT is going to stop going into things like neighborhoods, shopping centers, apartment complexes, and keep it more, the fewer times a bus driver has to turn the bus into another area, the more efficient that is. That's true. But that's not good for anybody with disabilities, particularly anybody who's poor, disabled, the elderly. It's the same population that typically gets hit when people are trying to save money. And so I want to bring that to your attention. I've got concerns, I'll go to the meeting. But this, to me, is more than just an efficiency on the routes. This is pure and simple, climate change, climate crisis. You know, I've, I've read the city reports, I went to the greenhouse gas inventory report last fall, and one of the areas that they talk about is that we can make the greatest impact on climate change through transportation, personal use of our cars. And I think that all makes sense. And I think there's a general agreement among the councils that if we get people out of their cars, use things like BT, Bloomington Transit, more, that's all positive. But then what I see and what I hear are conversations about parking garages and parking lots. And it just seems to me that the public, if you're going to say, we want you out of your car, but at the same time, we're going to make parking easier, more affordable, and more available, is sending a mixed message. And I think it's something that we ought to be, really kind of blunt with the community. And we need to start talking about that climate change and the climate crisis is not going to be solved or worked on out of any kind of convenience. It's going to take sacrifice. And my concern is this report represents something I think that will happen, is that if in fact we do anything, and I think that's some question, whether or not the sacrifice in the community is going to be shared, or whether it's going to be ending or falling on the people who can least support it and are least in position to be able to handle it. And I think we have to be bold and I think we have to be very direct and I think we ought to do things like reconsider the parking garage at the convention center. Oftentimes I hear about, it's not a case of, do we build the car, parking garage? Do we have a green parking garage? Because no one's ever been able to explain that to me, what a green parking garage is. But why don't we talk more about, should the parking garage even be built to begin with? At what point in time are we going to really suck it up and say, we're running out of time? I think everybody who reads the reports, the UN reports, any report you want to look at, is we're running out of time and we're still building parking garages. We know that long-term, that's not beneficial to our community. I would urge you to reconsider the parking garage at the convention center. I would re, I would urge you, when parking garages and parking comes up, for someone on both county and the city level, that the first question should be, why? Should we build them at all? Thanks.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any? Councilmember Sandberg.
Mr. President, we would like to recommend for the Bloomington Arts Commission, Babette Ballinger and Essence London.
We have motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, they are approved. Councilmember Sandberg. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Scambaluri.
Mr. President, on behalf of our interview team, we would like to recommend the following three individuals for the Commission on the Status of Women. It would be Ayame Joslin, Rachel Friedman, and Nana Amoa Rayme.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I believe her name is Friedman. But all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, they are approved. Congrats to them. Councilmember Smith.
Mr. President, I would like to recommend the appointment of Duncan Campbell, Derek Ritchie, Jenny Southern to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, they are confirmed.
Mr. President.
Mr. Smith.
I would like to make the recommendation for appointment to the Commission on Aging, Kelsey Hayslip and Robert Depper.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. They are confirmed. Any other motions for boards and commissions? Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Mr. President, I would like to, to move to appoint Tracy Gates to the Bloomington Urban Enterprise Association.
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. She is appointed. Any other appointments to boards and commissions? Seeing none, we'll now move to legislation for second reading and resolutions.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2004 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2004, to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning property from business park and residential single family to join an existing planned unit development and to approve the associated district ordinance and preliminary plan regarding 1550 North Arlington Park Drive, trinitus, penitent, pet, ugh, petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 2004 would rezone property from business park and residential single family to become part of an existing planned unit development with a total of 40.75 acres and approve the associated district ordinance and preliminary plan. Your land use committee action of February 26, 2020 was due pass for reasonable conditions 03, 04, and 05, 4-0 for all of those votes, with the committee recommendation for, including reasonable conditions of due pass, 4-0.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2004 be adopted.
Good motion in a second. Ordinance 2004 will be presented by Mr. Eric Gruelich. Hello, welcome. Give us a skinning.
I will try to give just a brief overview of the petition as a whole. As mentioned, this is for a property on the northwest side of town. The site is approximately just a little over 40 acres and encompasses properties that are zoned to planned unit development, business park, and residential single family. The petitioners are requesting to expand the PUD that governs a portion of this property to encompass that business port, business park portion to the west, as well as folds in a single-family residentially zoned lot to the east. This is to allow for the property to be redeveloped with a mix of residential uses throughout the property. The property was rezoned to a planned unit development back in the early 90s. A portion of that is, is zoned to PUD and was allowed or approved with uses for semi-trailer storage and some office uses. Use variance was approved late 90s, 1996, to allow some affordable housing units on the property. That was not constructed. A little bit later, in 2003, proposal for some residential units was again brought forward, but that was withdrawn. 2014, another petition was brought forward again. This was just prior to the update to the comprehensive plan, so we were operating under the growth policies plan that had this as an employment center. So we were very discouraging of any petitions on this site as we were in the middle of updating the growth policies plan. A petition was then brought forward about two years ago in 2018, after the comprehensive plan was updated. That went through the Plan Commission and the council. The council ended up not approving that petition due to a variety of factors. And so the petitioner is here again today with several improvements to that petition to try to have another crack at it. So shown on the site here is the 2018 site plan that was last seen by the council. Just real briefly, for this site plan, the bottom side of the screen is facing east. So 17, or Arlington Drive is to the east, 17th Street is on the left side of the screen to the south. So the petition in 2018 had a mix of duplexes and some single-family houses, along with an amenity center. There were several problems, several conflicts with the comprehensive plan and the overall site plan. So as I mentioned, the city council denied that petition and so the petitioner made several changes to it and are here tonight to request approval to amend the PUD that was originally approved in 91, to expand it to include the business park portion of the property, as well as the single-family property. So this petition, I'll just kind of give an overview of what is being proposed, would encompass four different areas, four different kind of development areas. On the north end of the site are areas, this is Area A, kind of outlined in green, and that would encompass 45 single-family lots. So one of the, and I'll just kind of get a brief history on the, the previous site plan and some of the problems with that, was the, the lack of incorporation of a, a kind of grid-like network of streets through the overall site. So the site is somewhat unique in that is, in that there is an electric line easement, a 100-foot electric line easement that runs through the center of the property. There are also several creeks and wetlands that are scattered throughout the property. And the site itself also has a, a little bit of a unique background in that when State Road 37 was being constructed in the, the late 60s, early 70s, a lot of this site was scraped for soil use, for filling, associated with State Road 37. So a lot of the site was scraped down to bedrock and has, has made development very difficult. The north half of this site, though, was not disturbed with that work. So it remains a, very much a mature forest, tall, mature canopy trees, good understory growth. So there's kind of a mix of vegetation on the property, with the north half of the property having good quality vegetation and, you know, most of, two-thirds of the property kind of suffering from very bare soil and cedar trees that are just kind of scattered throughout it. So the petitioners have made a lot of improvements from the previous site plan. They've increased the amount of environmental preservation. They've set aside the wetlands and the creeks as required. They set aside the north side of the site for a conservation area. That's a portion of the property that has the good quality trees. And so they, they've kind of broken up the remainder of the property in, as I mentioned, four areas of development. So on the screen that you see here, you see a large hatched gray area on the right side of the screen, on the north side of the site. That all represents conservation area. And then, so the Area A that I was initially mentioning, that is being called out for single-family lots. So one of the things that we found fault with, with the previous site plan was the lack of grid network streets within the development. So the single-family lots have been laid out to utilize that grid network. So the single-family lots front on public streets with alleys running between those to provide access for the garages and for the parking areas. So as I mentioned, these would be 45 single-family lots. And the petitioner is proposing, and this was a condition of approval as well, just to kind of reiterate this aspect, because it's a very important aspect, the petitioner will be giving these lots to the city to be used for our housing needs. So there was a requirement from the Plan Commission that these lots be fully graded out, all utilities be installed, sidewalks, street trees, streets, so the lots are build-ready for the city's uses. So these lots have been, in their district ordinance, called out for the standards of the R4 zoning district. So that would allow for single-family uses, that would allow for duplexes, a wide mix of uses to give the city the greatest flexibility for the use of that. We do not at this time have a definitive plan for how these will be used. This is a unique situation, so we're, we're kind of leaving all options on the table for how those lots will be developed. But those will be given to the city. So moving south of that, in an area designated as, as Area B, that is an area that is slated for townhomes and duplexes. So you can see in this particular area that there are, there's a hatched area kind of running diagonal through the site. That represents the creeks and wetlands that are on that property that are being set aside. So the petitioners have arranged buildings through that area to work around those environmental areas. One of the, the changes that was incorporated between the land use committee last week and today was a comment to include parallel parking spaces along the front of those townhome units, as well as immediately to the, behind them. So what you see, the site plan here, the petitioners have modified the arrangement of the townhomes so that the townhomes follow the curve of the street. That was something that the land use committee wanted to have incorporated. The petitioner has incorporated parallel parking spaces in order to reduce the amount of perpendicular parking between the buildings, to give it more of a street-like design, to increase pedestrian friendliness and bring the buildings a little bit closer together. So that is one of the changes that's happened between the land use committee last week. So that area is being proposed to be developed with townhomes and duplexes. There would be approximately 123 surface parking spaces on that area. And the density there is about 13 units per acre, about 255 beds on that particular parcel. Moving west of that, or kind of up on the screen, the area designated in red, parcel D, that is again being slated to be developed with duplexes and townhomes. Again, the petitioners have arranged public streets running through that with parallel, parallel parking spaces. The electric line easement that runs through the site, they're utilizing for parking spaces, some perpendicular spaces across there, that is kind of the extent of what Duke will allow within that easement area. So the petitioners have arranged those parking spaces behind those units. And I'll kind of go through the, the renderings for that in just a second. I'm just trying to give a general overview there. So those would all be duplexes and attached single-family. And that is an area that's designated for approximately 240 surface parking spaces at a density of about 10 units per acre and 309 bedrooms. So moving north of that, the area kind of encompassed with the blue outline, Area C, that would be a four-story multifamily building. So along the, the west side of this property, on the top side of the screen is I-69. So the petitioners have, have kind of located the multifamily building along the periphery of the property adjacent to I-69. One of the comments that came out of the Plan Commission was to try to maximize the buffer between this building and I-69. For the majority of that, they've included a 50-foot conservation area. There are a few portions of the building that are 25-foot setback from that property line, but for the most part, they've incorporated a 50-foot buffer between this property and I-69, and even greater than that as, as you kind of move south along the site. So the, the multifamily building would have 105 units in there, 261 beds. There would be a parking garage within the interior of the site, or interior of the building that would have 82 parking spaces. So overall, the petition as it stands right now is proposed at 387 units, 825 bedrooms. Those would be a, a mix of townhomes and multifamily and duplex units encompassing one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and four-bedroom. The majority of the units in this development are two- and three-year bedroom. So you can see on the screen in front of you, kind of a breakdown of the bedroom counts, as well as the parking spaces. Parking would be provided in a mix of the parallel spaces that I mentioned previously, as well as the perpendicular spaces behind some of the units. If you include just the private spaces, not including the on-street spaces, parking is provided at 0.44 parking spaces per bedroom. If you factor in the on-street spaces, that number goes up to 0.56 parking spaces per bedroom. I'll talk a little bit later about transit access and service for this property. That's been another aspect that's been kind of heavily discussed. So I'll just kind of real briefly go through each area, just to kind of give a, a larger view of that area. So Area A, that is the single-family lots. As I mentioned, these would be 45 lots. These would be served by alley access along the rear. There's a conservation easement of 50-foot that is being proposed between this development and the single-family residential properties to the east of that. So that is shown on the right side, the bottom side of your screen. You can see all the hatched area to the north of this and to the west. Again, that represents the conservation area. So Area B, which is just to the south of that, as you can kind of see a close-up here of the site plan for that. The townhomes along the street that runs through the kind of center of the portion that extends out to Arlington Drive is a public street. The petitioners have shown parallel spaces along the front of these townhomes, as well as parallel spaces kind of running between those units just to the south of that. So as I mentioned, this would have a mix of one and two and three, four, three and four-bedroom units. For this particular area, 80% of the units in here are one and two-bedroom. So there's a, a total of 162 units that are being proposed in here. 13 units per acre is the density. So this is just a, a maximum density, while it's possible that the bedroom count might change based on what they've submitted so far, they're, they're looking at mostly one and two-bedroom units here. So this is a rendering showing those townhomes and duplex units. So in the center of the screen, you can see the townhome arrangement. So these would be three-story buildings. Flanking that just to the left, you can see the duplex of the attached single-family units. So one of the things that their district ordinance incorporates is the language from the Unified Development Ordinance that deals with the anti-monotony standards. So the anti-monotony standards require differences in building height, differences in modulation, differences in finishing material, in order to break up the look and feel of units within the property. Certainly, this is something that is very important with this particular petition because there is a, a mix of housing units within here and a lot of those. So we expect some kind of typical unit designs when this comes forward with the final plan approval. But the petitioners have incorporated the minimum architecture But the petitioners have incorporated the minimum architectural standards based on the UDO requirements that deal with the anti-monotony standards, as well as they have included the finishing materials for these buildings. The finishing materials would be fiber cement board siding, brick, masonry, limestone, that kind of material. So, those have all been called out in their district ordinance. So, Area C, and this is the multifamily building that I mentioned previously, is a four-story building. It does have a parking garage in there. This is proposed to have 113 units in there. The majority of these units, just over 80%, are two- and three-bedroom units. Only three, four-bedroom units are being proposed within this building. And as I mentioned, there's a parking garage with 82 parking spaces that is being proposed in this building. There's also a commercial component to that building as well. It's just over 6,000 square feet. The petitioners have included a list of uses that includes the Commercial Limited Zoning District list of uses to try to provide some onsite services for the residents. There will also be an amenity center within there for the use of the students and the tenants of that building, but they have included some commercial space in order to provide some neighborhood-serving retail or other commercial uses for that petition. So, this is a look or a rendering of that multifamily building. So, you can see the ground floor commercial space. Again, the architecture of this is meant to complement a lot of the townhome and attached single-family units that we saw in the previous rendering. So, similar building materials, colors, window design, but there are differences in order to help break this up as well. So, they've got a lot of modulation, recesses. It would have a pitch roof along the front with flat roofs. One of the things that was mentioned previously was the incorporation of a white roof on this building. So, I think that was something the petitioner is also committed to as well. So, this is kind of a rendering showing how that multifamily building would look. So, one of the other issues or items of concern or question was how that multifamily building would look from I-69. So, you can see a rendering of how the multifamily building would look from I-69. There is or are a lot of trees along that corridor now that would be saved with this petition, as well as when the final plan is reviewed with this, there would be additional landscaping installed between that buffer area. So, we would have a high amount of landscaping between that building and I-69. So, just to the south of the multifamily building, Area D, this is slated for a mix of townhomes and duplex attached single-family units. One of the other comments that came out of the Land Use Committee meeting was incorporating a mix of housing types within this development. So, the petitioner has shown a mix of townhome units on the north side of the site as well as attached single-family on the interior with some townhomes kind of bookending some of those attached single-family residences. So, you've got a mix of townhomes and attached single-family running through the site. All of these units front on a public street. So, the street that you see with the parallel parking spaces would have a sidewalk and tree plot on both sides. There's also a 10-foot multi-use path that runs through the site that would connect 17th Street through the property down to or out to Arlington Drive as well. So, this property has access to Arlington Drive to the east as well as two access drives to 17th Street to the south. And you can see those two access drives to 17th Street on the left side of the screen here. Those would be public streets. One of them is a public street, the other currently is in an access easement, but the petitioner is working with the adjacent property owner to hopefully get that access easement dedicated as right away so that it would be serviced by two public streets running into the site and then another public street running out to Arlington. So, this area, Area D, is being proposed with 112 units. Again, this would be a mix of one, two, three, and four bedrooms. Over half of these would be one- and two-bedroom units. There are 240 surface parking spaces being shown here in a mix of the parallel on-street spaces plus the perpendicular. And again, this is the rendering for those townhomes and duplexes that you see within that site. So, one of the issues that was brought up with the initial petition two years ago was kind of a lack of environmental preservation or a greater possibility for increased preservation. So, this slide here shows the hatched area represents the amount of environmental preservation. So, the petitioners are setting aside almost a third of the property in conservation. And as I mentioned at the beginning part of the presentation, the substantially high-quality vegetation is on the north side of the site. So, the petitioners are setting aside all of that as well as the creeks and the wetlands that run through the site. They've incorporated a 50-foot conservation buffer between this property and the single-family uses to the east, although that's not required. The petitioner saw an opportunity to increase the amount of preservation there, so they placed additional area in preservation through there. So, there's just over, I think, 13 acres that's being set aside with this petition. So, one of the things that I mentioned with the public streets, this would be designed with a complete streets concept that would encompass both vehicular modes as well as pedestrian and multimodal. So, there's a 10-foot multipurpose path that is being shown along the interior of the site. This would run from Arlington through the site and connect down to 17th Street. The city is in the process of, or is in the process right now of improving 17th Street. So, this would connect to pedestrian facilities that run through 17th Street that would connect out to the west and then also east to the roundabout on Arlington and 17th and then connect further east. So, this helps connect a lot of missing pedestrian connectivity through this particular area. All of the internal streets would be public and dedicated and built to all of our standards. So, one of the other issues that was, been heavily discussed with this petition, and I'm not going to go into the exact specifics too much with my presentation right now. I think there are some others that might be able to, if that's a question, is Bloomington Transit access to this property. So, one of the issues with previous petitions has been connectivity and trying to promote alternative transportation as much as possible. So, the petitioners have committed to a contract with Bloomington Transit where a shuttle service would be provided to this development. It would not be an exclusive shuttle service. If there are people or stops along the route, they would certainly service that, but there would be a private shuttle that would serve this development to the IU campus. So, this is being slated to run throughout the week from morning to night, and so this would be that transit route that you see on the screen in front of you. I believe the petitioners and others can certainly speak to more specific details if there are questions, but that is a contract that would be required with this petition and would run with this approval for the life of it. So, if this property were to sell, this requirement would be passed on to future owners. So, one of the things certainly that the Plan Commission and staff reviewed with this petition was compliance with the Comprehensive Plan. So, there are many aspects of the Comprehensive Plan that this petition encompasses that previous petitions didn't. So, there's a mix of residential land uses as well as a heavy single-family component. The density is within the 2 to 15 units per acre that is outlined for the neighborhood residential area. There's a single-family component that, as I mentioned, is being dedicated to the city and certainly represents a substantial public benefit. This is a unique situation that we have not had with any other previous development of land that is being given to the city that is in a build-ready state. So, that is certainly something the city can use to help meet our diverse housing needs. The environmental preservation has been substantially increased with this from previous petitions. You know, I kind of talked about that just a little bit ago. Wide range of architectural styles, the anti-monotony standards help govern that and ensure that we're getting diverse buildings throughout this petition. The petitioners have incorporated pedestrian connectivity throughout this property that connects to both public streets. So, that is certainly something that encompasses a lot of what the Comprehensive Plan looks for. So, with that, the Plan Commission did recommend forwarding this to you 8 to 0 with the favorable recommendation. This was heard by the Land Use Committee that was mentioned earlier that voted 4 to 0 to send this to you as well. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Before we go to questions, is there a presentation for the petitioner and is it more than 10 minutes? Very good. If you would, please, let's just have them all together and then we'll ask questions of both.
So, hi, I'm Kimberly Hansen. I'm a manager of Design and Development with Trinitas Ventures. And as usual, Eric did an amazing job, so I am going to try to just hit some of the high points of the things we're excited about with this development, but some of this will be repeat for you. So, I think we're all aware of the location, but this is an aerial view of it. So, to orient yourself, you would have West 17th Street to the south and then Arlington Road to the east. Our proposed development sits on 39.29 acres and will offer a variety of housing types. So, we have apartments, townhomes, duplexes, and single-family homes. We are setting aside 14.62 acres of green space. We'll have 458 parking spaces or 56% on a per-bed ratio. We'll have a central retail space where we're after offering 1,700 square feet, community amenities, complete streets that will be dedicated to the city, and three access points, two off 17th Street and one off Arlington Road. So, as we were putting together the site plan, the four areas of development that Eric described really emerged. Area A is the single-family lots that we hope to convey to the city. Area B is the townhomes and cottages. Area C, a four-story multifamily and limited commercial building. And Area D is cottages and duplexes with a few townhomes. So, if you think about that aerial photo I showed you, you'd want to flip it on its side. You have West 17th Street to the left side of your screen and then Arlington Road to the bottom. The 100-foot Duke Energy Easement is the hatched line that runs through the middle of the site. And then, all of the grayed area is green space with the darkest gray representing the wetlands. So, again, I did just want to touch on some of the things we're most excited about. And one of those is Area A itself. We are recommending this is zoned R4 to allow for single-family duplexes and plexes, and we are proposing 45 build-ready single-family lots to be conveyed to the city of Bloomington for the development of workforce housing. The idea behind this is it will enable homeownership for the missing middle here in Bloomington. This will be completed during Phase 1 of construction and will include sidework, site work, roadways, and utilities. Another thing we're excited about is the open space and wetland protection that we have ensured on-site. So, a full 37% of the site will be placed in conservancy easements. That's, again, 14.62 acres. We've also worked with Red Wing Environmental and the Army Corps of Engineers to identify all the wetlands and intermittent streams on-site. There will be no encroachment on wetlands and all the intermittent streams will be protected. We also had a tree survey completed identifying the high-quality trees that will be protected along I-69. And as Eric mentioned, we increased the buffer to 50 feet where possible to preserve those. We've also been very happy to work with Lou May on a proposed Route 10 that would service this community and go to various stops on campus and downtown. This will operate on a 40-minute frequency year-round, so 7:00 AM to 10:20, Monday through Friday, and then 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday. These are, again, just those conceptual renderings. That's the four-story multifamily with the commercial space. We hope a local business will want to come in and take advantage of this community. And this is a look into Area D with the townhomes in the front and the cottages in the back. Again, that view from I-69. And then, I did want to touch on petition evolution. So, since 2018, Trinitas has incorporated some major changes that have really made this petition quite a bit different from what you've seen before. These have included establishing the plan to develop and convey the single-family lots to the city for workforce housing. This is in lieu of a housing fund contribution. We prioritize maximizing open space and wetland protection throughout the site. We worked with Bloomington Transit to create the new bus route to serve the community. This is in lieu of Trinitas operating their own private shuttles. There's been the addition of retail space. And thanks to all of the feedback we have received at Land Use and Plan Commission, we've made improvements to the site plan. These included a more gridded street pattern, more parallel parking, increased diversity of housing types in individual development areas, and townhomes that front and wrap access roads. So, in conclusion, this proposal before you truly represents our maximum effort to deliver a project that meets the vision of the city of Bloomington while still maintaining the value proposition for Trinitas. This proposed community will look, feel, and function in a way that is unlike any Trinitas development. We are very excited to move forward with it. So, I do want to say thank you to everyone that's been involved, including Eric and members of Planning and Transportation Staff, Doris and others at hand, and of course, the Plan Commission, Land Use Committee, and City Council members. Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings you right to about 30 minutes for the total presentation. Thank you both. Let's now go to 20 minutes of questions from council members before we go to public comment, but after we hear a report from the Land Use Committee Chair.
Thank you. So, the Land Use Committee met twice on February 12th and February 26th, and the discussion on those dates focused on certain issues, including the support for more of a street grid with alley connectivity, but we did learn about the constraints due to the wetland and the intermittent streams as well as the utility easement that runs north-south through the middle of the site. And those were the reasons that there's not more of a street grid than we see here. We also investigated bicycle, pedestrian, and automobile connectivity to and from the site. On February 12th, committee members expressed support for a greater mixture of different housing types, and in response, the petitioner added more townhomes in Parcel D and some cottage homes in Parcel B. And then, committee members were also very glad to see the petitioner's agreement to give 45 parcels in Lot A to the city for workforce housing. On February 26th, we, committee members expressed support for an idea brought forward by Councilmember Volin to put parallel parking on the streets in Parcel B and reduce the size of the parking lots between the two rows of townhomes. And we also discussed on that day the possibility of putting in more solar panels and the difficulty of doing so financially due to the split incentive where the developer puts in the capital expenditure but does not reap the benefit because the tenants are the ones who pay for the electric bills. We did hear public comment at both meetings from neighbors, and they were mostly concerned about automobile traffic and the uncertainty of what the build-out of Parcel A would look like. Of course, that's up in the air because that will be ceded to the city, and the city will work with a developer, and the specific site plan will come forward at a later date. We followed up the public comment with additional questions about the traffic study that was conducted to make sure that there would be no significant impacts on the traffic. And what we found from that traffic study was that it would mostly be an impact on people trying to pull out or pull into the development itself and not an impact of people who live in neighboring parcels. But of course, the final site plan will also consider traffic, and the city always looks at traffic as development progresses. So, we came up with three reasonable conditions, which we will get into later. They had unanimous approval by the Land Use Committee. You'll see two more come forward tonight that were discussed by Land Use Committee but were not in a formal wording that we voted on. And that's pretty much the report from Land Use Committee.
Thank you. With that, now, let's go to 20 minutes of initial questions from council members. I'll start on my right with Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, Mr. Karlik, maybe you could answer this. What is the expected phasing of these different sections? Is A to be done first, or in what order are they to be completed?
Yeah, so, that was something that is a condition of approval, that Parcel A has to be done with the first phase. So, more than likely, and that's kind of up to petitioners, whether that first phase would be for Parcel D or for Parcel C, but whichever parcel comes first, A has to be included within that.
Thank you. Are there questions? Really?
I have a couple of brief ones.
Is there a name for the project besides West Seventeenth Street? No name yet?
Yeah.
All right. And I did have a question about Area A. Was parking on-street contemplated there? In other words, what is the expectation of both planning and the developers about -- I mean, because, you know, I appreciated very much the great detail in the area that's the subject of my RCO8, the Area B, where you can see all the perpendicular and parallel parking on the street. But the streets of Area A are unmarked. And so it's not really clear to me whether there's an expectation that guests will park on-street, whether there will be driveways. Can anyone speak to that?
My name is Jeff Fanyo of Bynum Fanyo Associates. I'm the local civil engineer.
Whoops, sorry, wrong.
Oh, I'm done.
Another period. Yeah, no, no, you're good, Jeff. Go ahead.
And most of the lots in Area A will have alley access to the rear of the site where they could have parking in the garage. There is one tier of lots that's on the east side that would probably have parallel parking on-street. All the right-of-ways within that Area A are 50-foot for dedication to meet city standards, so there's room for on-street parking if so desired.
So is it safe to say that the street between Areas A and B, where you've added the parallel parking for Area B, is the same width as the streets within Area A?
That's correct.
So it's reasonable to assume that parallel parking's available on -- there's room for parallel parking on both sides of the street there?
That's correct. If the city desires that typical cross-section.
Okay. I mean, if we wanted the street to be narrower, say, for only one lane of parking on the street, that's doable here. It's not set it down.
Right. Do you have the right-of-way to do either one?
Thank you. Mr. Groellick, I wonder, is there any expectation by the Planning Department about whether the houses on the site will have driveways? Or will they -- I mean, I did hear that there's an alley here, but will they be allowed to have driveways, or will they be built so that they won't?
So these would be designed so there would not be driveways on the public streets, that the driveway would come off of the alley?
Very good. And so on the easternmost lots here, where there's no access to an alley, there will definitely be parallel parking on the street in front of those lots?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Smith.
The -- Mr. Fanyo, perhaps you can address this. There's a lot of great water features kind of that have been preserved. Is there any concern for that there might be flooding in that area?
No. We have provided bio swells in individual area retention areas as well as a larger centralized retention water quality pond throughout the site that will control our stormwater quality as well as our stormwater runoff.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Flaherty.
I have a follow-up from President Volan's question. I kind of had the same thought when I looked at this previously and never had asked it yet about parking on the streets in Part A or Parcel A. I wonder, with alley access and driveways off the alley, if a narrower street wouldn't be more desirable on those two streets? Since the street cutting east-west has parallel parking on both sides now, I wonder if streets that are narrower and only have one side of parallel parking would be more desirable. And just, I think Mr. Enlow just clarified that that would be possible. My question is really for staff, I suppose. When is that decision made? Or has it already been made, what the width of those streets will be?
So that's something that would be done at the final plan stage. So one thing I just want to kind of point out real quickly, and I'll see if I can kind of draw this on the screen here, is, you know, it's always possible that as we're evaluating this, that an alley could be installed along the backsides of these lots that would circle around. You know, the petitioner has just shown, you know, the general shape of the lots, the general area of the right-of-way. There can still be some small changes between this and when this comes forward at the final plan stage. So I just want to, you know, point out that, you know, this is an illustrative version. Certainly, a lot of detail has been given to that, but there, you know, the discussion of on-street spaces or parking on one side, that's something that would be done at the final plan stage once they've had a chance to work out the specifics of a grading plan and how the topography works. So, you know, there's still a lot of flexibility that could happen here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. My question, and maybe I've missed this. With Route 10 that was being selected and the petitioners agreed to take care of that or add that as part of the project, my question is, how long is this agreement?
Eric has explained during the Land Use Committee that that is a condition of the PUD, and it rides with the PUD. The only way that could ever be eliminated is if we came back and amended the PUD to take that section out, and then you'd have to approve it. Is that correct?
Yeah. So, you know, without going too far into the details of the contract, you know, it's basically left up that every three years or so it could be renegotiated to factor in rising costs, things of that nature, but it's required in perpetuity with this petition.
Thank you.
Any other first-round questions from members before we go to a second round? See, now we'll go to Councilmember Rallo.
Mr. Groellick, could you describe a little bit -- so there's going to be a bike-and-ped path within the facility. Does it connect to the multi-use path on Seventeenth Street? Is that correct?
Correct.
And does that multi-use path connect eastward toward campus? Does it turn the sidewalk? I can't remember.
So there are various stages of that side path that the city's been slowly installing along Seventeenth Street. So right now, I believe, and Craig can maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but it will extend all the way to the roundabout. We just recently installed a side path from the roundabout, I think on the north side of Seventeenth. And then there are, as you continue east along Seventeenth, there have been various sections of side path that have been installed over the course of the past five years or so. But we're working to get a continuous side path system along the north side of Seventeenth Street, you know, from Dunn all the way to this development. Craig can maybe fill in a few details there.
Craig Shunkweather, Transportation and Traffic Engineer. Eric's correct. We have a future project that we are actually in the design phase for a side path on the north side of Seventeenth Street from the roundabout at Arlington Road all the way eventually to Dunn Street where the -- on-campus.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be -- the plan would be to design it and install it within the next couple of years.
Okay, terrific. That's good. I had one other question. May I?
Please, go on.
Okay. My question was, what do you anticipate for the commercial retail that's going to be occupying that space? Do you have any ideas? What could it accommodate? How many square feet is it, first of all?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Jeff Kinnable. I'm with Trinitas Development. So we have designed up to 1,700 square feet of retail space. We do not have a specific retailer or use in mind. We've outlined a variety of uses that are allowable in that space. But to be sure, this retail in this location is somewhat of an experiment, given that we're not on a major thoroughfare, not visible from Seventeenth Street, as an example. And so we'll see. We have in-house expert mixed-use and retail developers. We'll work with them. We'll reach out to the local brokerage community and try and get the best, best retailer for this location.
In any case, it's probably going to serve that development. That's what you're anticipating?
I think it's fair to say that, yeah, up to 1,700 square feet would serve mostly this community. Sure, others from outside the community could stop by and use the services, but primarily I think the retailer would rely on the residents based here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thank you. It's a little on the side of the retail since I asked about it last week. We had a nearby resident on Seventeenth email to ask about saving space for community gardens or making some green space that is dedicated to gardening. I think that is a good idea since no one can walk to a grocery store from here, and just wondered what you all think about that. And, right, could you find some space around the multifamily or in between some of the homes for a community area?
I mean, yeah, I think that's an excellent idea. It is a very densely developed site outside of the open space preservation areas. So we have a ton, a ton of green space. A lot of the green space and open space preserved houses, of course, the older-growth tree and tree canopy. So I don't think that would make a good place for community gardens. But if there are other areas on the plan that are open and that could be utilized for that, certainly we'd be open to that.
I have one quick question about the retail spot. Is there room in the multifamily building? Should that retail spot be very successful for it to expand?
So the multifamily building houses the amenities for much of the community. If we saw really strong demand for retail, I'm sure there could be some reprogramming inside that multi-story building. Reprogramming of the amenity space, perhaps, to convert that to retail if we saw that strong demand? I think that's possible, yes.
And also, do you have any intent to put a commercial hood in so that it might be a restaurant as opposed to like subway-only?
Right. So I think before committing to a commercial hood, we'd really want to learn what the retail possibilities are here and what those retailers -- who those retailers might be and what their demands might be for the space.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
If there are no further questions, then with seven minutes left in that period, we'll stop that and go to the reasonable conditions. Who would like to introduce the first one?
Like reasonable condition number three?
Needs a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Flaherty, will you please present?
Yeah, I'll go over a few of the updates here from what we had initially voted on last week that was recommended for Zero to pass. The short of it was in the presentation, 360 days of service excluding a few holidays with 40-minute frequency and hours of operation, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday, which was an increase from the initial proposal from Bloomington Transit and petitioners. Some details are listed there. Most of this language change is really dealing with uncertainty and possible eventualities in, you know, 10, 15, 20 years down the line, most likely, as to what might happen with transit or if transit funding changes. And we would like to pursue a more frequent route or a different route that is still connected to this, kind of laying out the terms of how renegotiations would proceed. So I appreciate very much the petitioner working with us on developing that language over the last week or two. I think we are, after some back and forth, in agreement on the current draft and how that works for everyone. So I won't go into detail on each provision there, but if anybody has questions about any of them or any details of the reasonable condition, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right. With that, are there any questions? First, let me ask staff, the petitioner, do you have any comments on RC3?
Nope, looks good for us.
Okay. With that, we go to questions from members on reasonable condition number three. Any questions to my left? To my right? Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. And I think this is for my colleague, Matt Flaherty. Do we have a feel on what the BT or the directors, since all this is subject on their approval? I'm not looking for a commitment. I'm not looking for a yes-no caucus thing. I just want to have a feel for what the Board of Directors is thinking about this.
Sure. I think Mr. May can probably speak to that. We've been in touch in the development of this condition as well.
Lou May, General Manager, Bloomington Transit. I have kept our board informed of the negotiations that we've had. I think generally speaking, the board is supportive of it, and I don't anticipate any issues from the board in terms of reaching agreement with the petitioner.
Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on that question. How many buses will need to be added to the fleet in order to accommodate the new route?
Just one.
Okay, so there's room. In other words, you've got room to handle that. How much more capacity does the current Grimes Lane facility have for additions of buses?
We're at about 90% capacity at Grimes Lane. We could potentially add seven to eight buses.
Very good. Any other questions on RC3? Thank you, Mr. May. If there are no other questions, we'll go to the public for comment on reasonable condition number three. If you have any comment, please come to the podium. Is there any comment? Seeing no public comment? Pardon? Oh, Randy, I'm sorry. Mr. Paul, if you would come.
Does it take me a while to get there?
No, yeah, I didn't -- just didn't see a hand raise, that's all.
No, I just wanted to occasionally say positive things. I think this is very good. I appreciate Matt, the petitioner, and BT working on this. I think it's an excellent idea.
Thanks very much. Any other public comment on RC3? Seeing that, we come back to the council for debate. Is there any public -- or final council member, Scambolari?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate this reasonable condition as well, and I think public transit will be critical for this area. One suggestion I would offer or encourage transit to consider is allowing Route 10 to in some way connect with a grocery store and the other shops on North Kinzer. It's been observed several times that this neighborhood is not within walking distance to a grocery store or any other store, pretty much. And my understanding is that this route is not etched in stone at this point, but I would encourage us to consider that. But again, I support this reasonable condition, and thank you for adding it.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I appreciate the work that Mr. Flaherty and the petitioner put into this reasonable condition. It's very detailed, but I think the detail and the changes since last week are all to the better. I really appreciate the petitioner expanding the hours on Saturday and Sunday, and I think they had a good point about, well, if there's another development on this route, then maybe that other developer could chip in something as well. That makes sense to me, so I'm happy to support this.
Thank you. Any other debate on RC3? Seeing that, I will say at least that I take Councilmember Scambolari's concern to heart. The debate that BT is having right now is on frequency versus accessibility, and it's something that Mr. Paul spoke on earlier today. I think that the route to the Old Marsh, the North Kinzer Pike Kroger, would actually be more of a diminishing return than -- there was a version of this map that had it going south of Second Street. The Kroger that's closer to the Transit Center might be as not -- as much if not more walkable than the -- more practical for the bus to access than to go through the north-side Kroger. I say that with regret. I mean, I would like it if it could. And I'm looking forward to seeing what the final route would be. I don't even imagine that it'll be numbered Route Number 10 once all is said and done. They're in the midst of doing a redesign of their -- of the entire system. But, you know, all this is rearranging deck chairs. That sounds negative. This is great. This is great. What I meant to say is this is window dressing. The important thing is that this project is committing $350,000 roughly a year in perpetuity or the -- for a route that will cost at least that much in year 2022 or what have you. And this is transit built into the project. It's what allows them to have less parking in the project, what it, you know, directly goes to our concerns about adding housing, yet providing it more sustainably by having less demand in single occupancy vehicles. I mean, this project alone may reduce some of the single occupancy vehicle demand that was called for in the TDM proposal that we heard earlier today, too. So, I mean, we need to see, if we see any more big projects like this, this is a template on which they should be working. The more transit we can build, the less parking we have to supply, and the more we can get -- discourage people to use vehicles by themselves and to find other ways to get around. So I support it wholeheartedly. And with that? We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the role on RC3?
Councilmember Scambolari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
That passes nine zero. We now go to reasonable condition four. That's yours truly. I'd like to move reasonable condition four.
Second.
I have a second. All right. All this asks is that, can we go to Area B? I'll give myself five minutes to present, but it should take less than that. So in Area B, what this called for is, I don't know, can we zoom in on the map at all, Mr. Gurilik? So in two areas here, you see that the townhouses on the far left side of this illustration that are now staggered, before they were simply parallel to the side of the screen, that now they make an effort to match the curve of the road in front of it. The same is true for the row of townhouses closest to the rightmost corner, in this case, the north, that north corner there, where the five sets of townhouses have been staggered, to match the curve of the road. If the roads are going to be curved, the residences should front the street and not simply be set back by a gap of green space. And the petitioner has been kind enough to cooperate with this, and they've presented here the map that you see. Of course, the map is rough. There, you know, these indications are, you know, no more specific about how the houses will look than the single-family lots to the north. It's just identifying where the housing will roughly go, and I don't expect it's going to look exactly like this, where it's just sort of staggered. I mean, my hope is that they'll meet the curve of the road, and they'll have the same amount of space between the front door and the street that all their fellow buildings will have. I trust that throughout the project, whenever they can, they're going to try to make those buildings match the street, but specifically in these two corners, they have agreed to do so. And that's really all this RC holds. With that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, seeing none. Public comment? We'll go to the public.
Do you want to ask staff or petitioner?
Seeing none from the public, we'll go back to the council. Do we have any council comments? Yes, sir.
Just like to, I neglected to ask staff and the petitioner if they had any concerns or comments on RC four.
No, I think that's pretty clear.
Okay.
Final comments from council? Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry. A question's been called in second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
That's approved nine zero. We go now to the, next to RC.
Mr. President, I move reasonable condition number five to ordinance 2004.
Please go ahead and present.
This reasonable condition is really just putting in writing something that the petitioner said they were going to do anyway, and that's instead of eight vehicle charging stations with solar power to generate the electricity, there will be 12. That's it.
Questions? Well, quick check with staff and petitioner, any concerns?
No concerns from staff.
No? All right. So we go now to questions from members on RC five. To my right? To my left? Seeing none, we go to the public for comment on reasonable condition number five. Seeing none, we come back to the council for debate. Is there a final comment on RC five? A motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on RC five?
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
That passes nine zero. We go now to the next RC.
Mr. Chair, I move reasonable condition seven to ordinance 2004.
We have motion in a second. Will, please go ahead and present.
Okay, so this codifies what the petitioner has brought to us as slightly revised site plans for areas B and D, and represents an effort to mix it up a little and add some townhomes in, some additional townhomes amidst the cottages in Area D and a few cottages amidst the townhomes in Area B. And this is in response to concerns on myself and perhaps some other Land Use Committee members that it would be, that there's a homogeneity of housing types, homogeneity of housing types in Areas D and B, and this would make it a little bit more diverse in those areas.
All right. Are there comments from staff or petitioner on RC seven? Mr. Gurilik?
So I guess, you know, my only, my only real thought on that is just kind of the generality of it. And so what I, what we oftentimes encounter is, you know, something is shown here, and when it comes to final plan stage, they show, oh, hey, you know, we want to take some of these townhomes and, you know, make them into attached single-family. So it almost prefers some kind of a number, you know, and I'm just kind of talking out loud of what we, you know, what I'm concerned with is, you know, you know, there are a section of townhomes that are shown here, and then they want to take two of those and turn them into duplexes. How rigid is what we're, what they're showing now to what we are going to be holding them to when final plan stage comes around? That's, that's the only thing that I'm kind of just giving a pause to, you know, you know, I would feel better with maybe a number of, you know, 5%, 10% diversity. That's my only, only kind of thought. You know, if the petitioner feels comfortable, you know, committing to, you know, the plan that's shown here, then that's certainly fine. You know, we just run into a lot of times, you know, as things progress and site plans get developed, you know, small nuances, changes. So I just want to kind of get a feel from maybe the petitioner of how locked in they feel they are with what this is showing diversity-wise.
Mr. Knabel?
Thank you. Great point, Eric. I'm looking at this, and I'm thinking to myself, how do we maintain flexibility to account for those very things, the things that we learn about and glean from a final site plan review, ways to improve this? My concern with locking us into something or a specific number is that we can't be flexible and adjust as we learn more going through the final site plan process. That's my initial thought, is one of flexibility. I mean, I could, I could commit to the plan you have in front of you. That's what our architect drew up. It's what we provided. It's what we stand behind. But if there are improvements to be made to that, it seems healthy to allow for that flexibility during the final site plan approval process.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, do you have a response?
No, this is the first I hear of these concerns, so I would need a few minutes to think about this.
Let's go then to questions on RC seven. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. This is for the petitioner or staff. Either or. I guess my first question is, has this been addressed in previous Land Use Committee meetings? What we're talking, this RC tonight?
Correct, yes. Yeah. So the desire was expressed to mix the product types more instead of having a homogeneous zones of development, yes.
Okay. And was there a request of a numbers or percentages from your standpoint?
I don't believe we established a number, no.
Okay.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, I might suggest, you know, maybe just an amendment that says each area shall include a mix of townhomes and attached single-family so that, you know, we do have that diversity without, you know, locking them into one thing.
Piedmont, would you like to respond to Mr. Gurilik's suggestion?
That seems reasonable to me.
Does that conclude your question, Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Further questions on RC seven? While Councilmember Piedmont Smith, whoops, wrong period, while she furiously writes, any other questions on RC seven? Seeing none, why don't we go to the public for comment on RC seven? Is there anyone who has an opinion on this particular thing? Seeing none, we'll come back to the council for debate. Is there any final comment on RC seven? I mean, this is all pending potential rewording of it, which Councilmember Piedmont Smith is working on as we speak. I would also entertain a motion to temporarily postpone it while we take up RC eight, while they finish working it out. Councilmember Sims?
I just want to know, how long will it, with what Eric just suggested, will that take very long? Because it's a fundamental change that I think we've all just talked about, so I'm not so sure I'd want to delay this much longer unless Councilmember Piedmont Smith sees that that's a necessity.
Well, I mean, I, I think I have language that I would be fine with, but I know that Mr. Sherman will have an opinion.
Mr. Sherman, could you weigh in on this, please?
I would like a moment to converse with staff and petitioner about how we might resolve it.
Okay.
I'm going to postpone further deliberation until after RC eight.
Second.
Motion in a second. Let's do this by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. All right, we'll postpone RC seven in favor of RC eight for the moment. Mr. Chair, I move reasonable condition eight to ordinance 2004.
It's been moved in second. Councilmember Volin, please present.
Yes, so during the Land Use Committee discussion on the 26th, I asked the petitioners to see what they could do about mitigating the parking lot feel without actually reducing parking. First, I want to say, I want it to be, to compliment the fact that they've managed to do a project that's nowhere near downtown with less than 0.5 spaces per bedroom parking. This is already a great thing. But if you look at Area B, the townhouses in the area where there's a lot of the wetlands that they're preserving, there were a lot of 90-degree perpendicular parking. That's what makes it feel like a parking lot. And I asked them, can you spread out the parking so that it's all parallel? Parallel parking is good. It slows traffic down. It feels more like a street than a parking lot, and they did so. They, between last week and this week, they put out a map that you should see in your packet that shows that basically two-thirds of all the parking in Area B is now parallel, and that includes the main street between it and area A. If you guys could turn your microphones off, that would be helpful, Mr. Sherman. Mr. Sherman, could you turn off your microphone, please? They are deep in thought. All right. Thank you, Mr. Knabel. You can work for the city council anytime you like. So anyway, a full two-thirds of the 120 spaces or so in this area are now parallel parking, and an appreciable amount of parking in Area D was already parallel. Every time that I or other people have requested that they think about this, the petitioner's been very accommodating. And so I want you to look at map B and see if you don't agree that the streets feel more like streets in Area B and that there's much less perpendicular parking in the area. That's what's in question in reasonable condition number eight right now. With that, I'm happy to answer questions, Mr. Sims.
Thank you. Going to the council, do we have any questions from council colleagues?
I would also ask if the petitioners have any opinions.
Seeing none, going to the public. Do we have any public comments? They shook their head no.
Okay.
So don't go there, okay? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, going back to final comments from the council. Mr. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, I just briefly wanted to say I appreciate Councilmember Volin bringing this, and I appreciate the petitioners and architects and engineers working on it. I do think this is a much improved element of that parcel, and will make, we have all expressed concern about, with, in the area with a lack of a street grid, the feel of it being kind of like a parking lot, and I think this does a lot to address those concerns. So I just wanted to say I appreciate it.
Thank you. Further council comments? To my right, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I also think this is a great revision to the ordinance or reasonable condition to place on the ordinance. What I really dislike about a lot of the townhome developments we have in Bloomington is that they're so car-focused. They really feel like, you know, this is not a place for kids to play, this is not a place for people to hang out and talk, this is a place for cars. And so by narrowing the street, narrowing the distance between the two rows of housing, I think we go a long way to a more community feel rather than a parking lot car-focused feel to this part of the development. So I appreciate the change.
Thank you for that input. Councilmember Volin?
The one thing I didn't want to mention until now was I do also hope that because there's flexibility in this project, it shouldn't make that much of a difference whether they do 90-degree or angled parking, and if they can make the 90-degree parking that's left, angled parking, they could also make it back in angled parking, which would also be better for everyone, including people passing by it. Not making it a requirement, just asking. What the heck? The previous project PUD that we approved actually did innovate back in angled parking over on Longview and PiedEllis, but not making it a requirement, just suggesting that it would, it would not hurt anyone to do it, and it might make the place even more desirable. With that, I urge approval.
Thank you. Any further final comments from council? Will the clerk please call the roll on reasonable condition number eight?
Call the question.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Second. Question's been called in second. Now, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
That passes nine zero. We come back now to RC seven. Is there a motion to take it off the table?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Ms. Piedmont Smith, what do you, what say you?
Well, I gave my sheet to Mr. Sherman, so.
So we, we have now reduced to writing the change that you'll find acceptable? While it's being passed out, or?
No, it's just one, one copy.
Okay, if you would please read it to us, yes.
All right. So reasonable condition seven. At the council's request, the petitioner submitted a modified preliminary site plan, which, among other changes, added more townhomes in Area B and some cottage homes in Area D. So that's unchanged, that first sentence. Those changes address the diversity, those changes addressing the diversity of housing in Areas B and D as generally depicted, I added the word generally, in the modified site plan submitted by the petitioner shall be a condition for approval of this proposal. And then we add the sentence, each area will include a mix of townhomes and cottages.
Say that last sentence again, please.
Each area will include a mix of townhomes and cottages.
Okay, that is the revised RC seven. Are there questions from members?
So it, may I just?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, so these slight revisions that we made allow a bit of flexibility so that if the petitioner, you know, in the course of developing this project finds that this particular site is more conducive to a townhome or a cottage, they have some flexibility there. They don't have to do exactly what we're looking at tonight, but it's clear
there. They don't have to do exactly what we're looking at tonight, but it's clear that we want a mixture of those two housing types in both of these areas.
Is that okay with staff?
Yes, absolutely.
Petitioners? They're good with it. Okay, let's go now to questions. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I guess my question, well, it's more of a comment, but it's just that when you say each, each area will have a mixture, I, I think you're talking about areas B and D, but there are four areas of this site plan, and so you might want to say areas B and D, if that's what you're talking about.
Right. I, Mr. President, may I?
Yes, please.
Since the immediately preceding sentence says areas B and D, I believe it's understood that that's, those are the areas we are talking about.
Is that it, your question?
It does.
Any further questions on RC seven as revised?
Just a point of order. We don't have to vote on the amendment to this. Is that correct? Or we just submitted?
Mr. Sherman?
You should amend the reasonable condition and then vote.
Move to amend the reasonable condition in line with the modified version we received here.
Motion in a second. Any questions? Public comment on the revision to amendment to RC seven? Final comment on RC seven? Motion, please? Will the clerk please call the roll on the revision, the amendment to RC seven?
Okay, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Did you get that? I'm sorry, I said yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes. The revision is accepted nine zero. Now we come to the RC seven as amended. Are there any questions for it as amended? Seeing none, we go to the public for comment on RC seven as amended? Seeing no comment, come back to the council for debate. Any final comment on RC seven? Motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on RC seven as amended?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
That's accepted nine zero as well. All five RCs accepted nine zero. We come back now to ordinance 2004 as amended through reasonable conditions. Are there any follow-up questions from members about ordinance 2004 as amended? To my right? To my left? Seeing none, we'll come back, we'll go to the public for comment on ordinance 2004 as amended. Here's your chance to speak to the project as a whole. Any member of the public? Seeing none, we come back to the council for final debate. Is there anyone who has a comment on ordinance 2004 as amended? Councilmember Piedmont Smith, five minutes.
Yes, I would like to thank the members of the Land Use Committee for efficient work and for hashing out three of the five reasonable conditions in writing before our meeting tonight. And the other two, the ideas were out there, they were discussed. So we did not leave to the last minute any of our suggestions to improve the project. I would also like to thank the petitioner, who was very patient and made changes and very accommodating to suggestions from the Land Use Committee. We appreciate that. I'd like to thank Eric Gerulich and the other staff who worked on this in the Planning and Transportation Department. And I think this, this is a really wonderful petition because we are going to get 45 lots given to the city where we can develop workforce housing. And this is a really pressing need in our community. It's very, very difficult for people of moderate income to find a home to purchase in Bloomington, and this will add 45 of them with possibility for accessory dwelling units and maybe some duplexes in there as well. So I think this is a great place to try out our new R4 zoning, which we approved with the UDO, and it's very exciting. So I appreciate Trinitas agreeing to that. I also am excited about the bus route. This is the second PUD we've approved where the petitioner has paid for a bus route. And I think this is great. Certainly, the, the location calls for, is an ideal place to have a bus route because it is located pretty far away from campus and other employment and shopping. And so it would really be necessary to use a car if there was no bus. And so this makes it more accessible to people of lower incomes, people who do not drive, and it helps us achieve our goals that we heard about earlier this evening, to reduce single occupancy vehicle use, and our goals that we're going to talk about tomorrow night about reducing greenhouse gas emissions and, and meeting our climate change obligations. So the bus route is also a big plus here. So I'm very grateful for that, and I'm going to be happy to vote yes on this project.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
I do want to acknowledge the Trinitas team, Ms. Hanson, and everyone who we work with at the Plan Commission level. It's really been a pleasure to see the adaptability and the flexibility and such a light year difference between this proposal and what originally came. This checks off all the boxes. It did then. It's, it's been improved over the process up till now. But this is hopefully a gold standard for other developers to take a look at as we go forward to try to meet the housing needs of this community. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scambaluri?
Yes, thank you. This project is in the district that I represent, so I have more than just a sporting interest in seeing this turn out well. Several bravos are in order. First of all, to plan staff for the work you've done, Plan Commission, Land Use Committee. Ordinarily, I'm the kind of person who tends to have a lot of questions about things like that, and I didn't tonight because I've had a chance to vet this all along. So I'm really pleased about that. Trinitas, you've done a really remarkable job at engaging the neighborhoods, too. I know that this has been the subject of two constituent meetings that I've held. The first time I think I walked the property with you is back in October. And I know that you have spent time with the Crescent Bend Neighborhood Association a number of times. So I really appreciate what you've done to engage Crescent Bend and West 17th and the Reserve at Chandler's Glen and a lot of the surrounding areas. So thank you for that. I also want to applaud those, those neighborhood associations, too, particularly Ms. Carrie Winkle for her leadership with the Crescent Bend Neighborhood Association. I received an email from her at 6:29 this evening saying, I don't think we're going to come. It looks good. So, so thank you for your good work, and I will be enthusiastically supporting this proposal.
Thank you, Councilmember Scambaluri. Any other final debate? No, no. Councilmember, Councilmember Flaherty?
I'll give you brief. Yes, thanks to the many folks who worked on this, including petitioner, to bring it to this point. Two really substantial benefits here in the lots that we're getting as a city, of course, and the transit piece. Both of those are really meaningful. So I think that adds a lot to this project. Just wanted to voice again a desire to work on the split incentive issue in the context of large complexes. If petitioner has suggestions or thoughts or wants to follow up in any way, please do. I mentioned I intend to follow up with Mr. Crowley, who's in the back of the room. It's high on my to-do list in the near future. So I'd like to continue to brainstorm and work on that in the context of larger multifamily rental developments. And just wanted to get that out there. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other final comment? All right, I'll take my opportunity. I do trust Planning and Transportation to do the right thing on Area A streets. I think no matter what we come up with, whether there's an alley on the Far East Side or not, I think it'll be fine. Just the idea that we'll follow as the areas B and D having parallel parking on the street, so we should do the same in Area A. With Area A, even though it won't be built out, the net increase in housing in this project will in fact be the largest housing project in the city's history. It's larger than the one that was approved in North Walnut that was shrunk slightly. It was started out at 825, I think. But unlike the CDG project, which invested $130,000 a year in perpetuity for their bus route, albeit it's closer to IU, for 750 beds, this project, it's 825, not, not mentioning the, the single-family houses that might be built in Area A. And they're investing almost three times as much in transit. That right there has permanently raised the bar for what we should expect of large projects. But this, this project is more than that. It's, I like to think of it as a very sensitive development approach. I mean, they checked with everybody. They, they got the buy-in of the nearby neighborhoods. They, they accommodated all the requests that Land Use Committee members had, and then some. They were sensitive to, to council's concerns. And the project is so much better than what we saw two years ago, let alone, I mean, it's better than what we saw at the beginning, even though it was a very good beginning, let alone the initial project two years ago, which was quite contentious in comparison. This shows, first of all, that there is pressure to develop housing. And, you know, we, we needed to act on it, but we got a much better project as a result. I think that also the new innovation of the committee submitting questions in advance helped smooth the process when it came to council. I, but the only thing, I mean, I appreciate this very sensitive investment in the community. The only other thing I'll point out in closing is the Trinitas logo looks suspiciously like the IU logo. And I, I don't know how that plays in Bloomington, but I even wonder more how it plays in your hometown of Lafayette. So with that, if there's no other?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 2004 as amended?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
That's a nine oh vote. Congratulations. Thank you. Bill is a good project. With that, we go now to legislation for first reading. We have none. So we'll go now to our period, second period of open public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on items that we have not discussed tonight? Seeing none, we come back to the council for discussion of our schedule. Mr. Sherman? Please speak close to the mic.
Actually, I'll defer to Stephen Lucas on the schedule.
Mr. Lucas?
Did you forget about the minutes also? The minutes also?
Yes, thank you. There are a number of actions the council may want to take tonight regarding its schedule. The first is to cancel the committee of the whole meeting that was supposed to take place immediately following tonight's regular session that appeared on our annual schedule. Given that there is no legislation for first reading, that meeting is no longer necessary. And as a corollary, next week's regular session is not necessary either because there's no legislation up for second reading at that meeting and no new legislation coming forward at that time. So the council should entertain a motion to cancel both meetings.
Is there such a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Both meetings are canceled. Mr. Lucas?
The next item, I believe, is a possible special session that the council may want to schedule for March 25th. This comes up by the request of the administration to consider an ordinance refunding certain water bonds earlier than what we had originally scheduled. This item was going to come forward to the council for first reading on April the 1st. The administration has asked, not only could we move it up, but could we also have the council possibly consider that ordinance and take action in one evening? The council is able to do that if, if there's unanimous consent to hear it and two-thirds majority to adopt it. The reason that there is an urgency is that apparently a dip in the bond market has meant that by taking action earlier, the city could see substantial savings on, on refunding these bonds. I don't know the exact number. I don't know that anyone does. Markets fluctuate. But this comes on the advice of the Bond Council and the Controller, Jeff Underwood, to act quickly. I will note that this item could be heard at a work session that I will mention at the end of scheduling on March 13th. So the council could have an opportunity to hear about it then and then act if it's ready on March 25th at one meeting. If it would like to do so, the council should schedule a special session for that evening to enable it to act and approve that ordinance in one go.
There is a motion in the packet. Is there anyone who would like to make that motion before, so we can entertain it?
And, and I will note that the motion in the packet also includes a contingency that if the council is not ready to act on March 25th, it may want to refer the ordinance to the Utilities Committee to consider that same evening, which would then enable final action on April the 1st. And given the uncertainty around the scheduling, the motion in your packet would also authorize the president to cancel any unnecessary meetings, if that makes any sense.
Is someone who would like to make the motion as printed in the packet?
Yes, I move to schedule a special session immediately followed by a meeting of the Utilities Committee for March 25th, 2020 at 6:30 PM, and to grant the president the authority to cancel any unnecessary, unnecessary meetings for that evening, including the previously scheduled committee of the whole.
Second.
Motion in a second. Subject's limited debate and is amendable. Needs a simple majority to pass. Any questions or comments on this motion?
So, let me just make sure I understand. I realize I'm the one who made the motion, but I was reading it. The, so this would allow for, if the council does not feel comfortable with, or does not have the votes necessary for hearing it in one session and making a final vote in the special session, to instead refer it to the Utilities Committee, right? Standing Committee?
Which would then meet that same night to discuss it and then could report back to the full council on April the 1st.
Okay.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Am I understanding this to be essentially contingency planning? If, if for some reason we can't hear in one night, we'll have already noticed the Utilities Committee meeting in anticipation that it might be needed. That's?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. As this was explained to me, the refinancing would have taken place in the cycle of April 1st, 7th, 15th, and that the Bond Council has advised that any way we could move it up would make it more likely that we could save roughly $2.6 million in interest by refinancing. And while it's not a sure thing that we won't be able to do it by the 15th, we just are trying to ensure that we can take advantage of the change in the market. Mr. Flaherty?
Is, is there a particular reason why we couldn't take this up at our March 11th, originally scheduled regular session next week?
Yeah, it hasn't actually come out of Utilities yet. They're, the USB, my understanding is that they're hearing it on the 13th themselves. Is that right?
It's either the 12th or the 13th.
Yeah.
Given the USB action that still has to take place and the need for council staff to review it and, and package it for the council, the March 25th date was the first available date, which was earlier than April 15th, I believe, was when it was going to take place.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
Utility Service Board meetings have been scheduled on the same nights we have our county, city convention center meetings. So I guess, since you put me on the spot, I have no comment.
I did not, I did not mean to put you on the spot.
Okay.
I just thought you might have something to say.
And I will note, this is sort of an emerging idea. It was brought up by the administration yesterday. I know that the USB was talking about when they could meet to consider it. So everyone's trying to, to move quickly to take advantage of potential large savings for the city.
This just gives us a chance to hear a little bit early if we decide to do it. It will require unanimous consent to adopt in one night and two-thirds, two-thirds approval to adopt it in one night. So in case we, we don't have that kind of unanimity, then we need to plan to have it heard somehow. But either way, we can move it up to as early as the 25th or April the 1st. Is there any other question, are there any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a? Seeing none, I'll entertain a... All right, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
All right, that passes 9-0. Thank you. We have a couple more items. Mr. Lucas?
The next item is an offshoot of the passage of standing committees. In talking through how these committees are going to work and thinking through their scheduling, both the administration and council staff have seen a need to give the council president more authority to, to schedule these standing committee meetings and to approve their agendas. So you'll see in your packet a draft motion to grant this authority to the president. There's a included rationale that sort of explains the, the reasoning behind the motion, but essentially it would grant the president the ability to set agendas and to schedule these matters in advance of first reading of a piece of legislation, which is what happens now with regular sessions, committee of the holes, and, and special sessions. Our code includes that authority. The motion would not remove the ability of the council to make a final decision about a referral at that first reading, but it would give the president the authority to make a referral, and then the council could override that if, if it disagreed with the president. So the idea behind this is to give the administration and council staff a little more certainty earlier in the process to ensure that the right staff members are in the room and to ensure that they can schedule their, schedule their own affairs around these committee meetings. So I'm happy to answer any questions about it. This would require suspending the rules, and that would take a two-thirds vote of the council tonight to do that. The motion as drafted would be time limited, and we've included a date of September the 1st of this year, which would match when the interview committees that the council is still using, it would match the date that those are going to no longer be in existence. So the idea is that this would be time limited, where this is a new process, and we're still sort of figuring out what gaps there are in, in the steps along the way. So if, if this doesn't work, if there are issues, it, it could be changed by another suspension of the rules by the council. However, if it does work, this may be something that we need to change in our code to make more permanent, so...
Need someone to make the motion. Thank you, Mr. Lucas.
Move to suspend the rules under Bloomington Municipal Code 2.04.255 and 2.04.270 until September 1st, 2020, to give the council president, in consultation with the vice president and the various committee chairs, the authority to approve the agendas and starting times for meetings of council standing committees. The president shall also have the authority to refer legislation to the appropriate committee before the meeting at which the legislation is introduced for first reading, but such a referral may be changed by a motion approved by a majority of the council when the legislation is introduced for first reading.
We have a motion in a second. This is debatable and amendable, it needs two-thirds majority to pass. Are there questions on this motion? Seeing no questions, are there any comments, debate on it? Motion is second. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
That is also approved 9-0. Thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Thank you. Just a few reminders, if you'll give me just one second. Councilmember Flaherty mentioned that there is a meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the Mill. That is a potential meeting of the council, it's been noticed, and all are, are welcome to attend that. There's also a March 13th work session that I mentioned, where three items are up for discussion at that meeting. I've mentioned the first one, which is the water bond refunding that, that we talked about. There's also a potential amendment to the salary ordinance for 2020 that you could hear about. I believe that's an annual review of the salary ordinance and any necessary changes that would come forward from HR. The last ordinance that would be ready for discussion at that work session is the adoption of conversion maps and correcting text for the UDO. This wouldn't be, I don't believe, any change to the zones, but just the conversion from the old zones to the new zones. So those are the three items that would be ready for discussion at the work session. Councilmembers might want to indicate if, if they are intending to attend.
Who can attend a work session on the Friday the 13th at noon? Raise your hand. One, two, three, we've got six. Looks like we should hold that session.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other matters? Mr. Sherman?
Looks like our agenda, the clerk informed me that the agenda listed the minutes that you approved as January 5th. Actually, that was January 15th, so the record could reflect that those minutes were approved, that is, those for the 15th. Be appreciated. Thank you.
Do, do we need to take any action?
I think we all, you know, this ought to be enough. It's just a statement that we were in error.
Okay, we're correcting the agenda. Thank you.
Any other business? Any other announcements? Final comments?
No, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. Good evening.